We're here. With me is the Vice Chair, Peter Germaine, and our Clerk, Erin Underhill. We also have our Town Administrator, Mr. Gazinski, Mike Gazinski, Karen Burey, our Operations Manager, and Bob Weiss, who is our Economic Development Director and also Energy Manager. We may have others, but those are the ones we have so far.
Yep, we have Jim McKay is here as well, and Carol.
And Jim McKay. Jim McKay, okay, great.
We may not be able to see everybody, yep, Jim is here.
Then we're off. Which means that we may be able to jump quickly to 20-167, but not right away. Oh, before we begin, I will say there's a couple of announcements I'd like to make. One is that the Select Board prepared and forwarded a letter to our Governor and our three legislators regarding the Police Reform Bill in accordance with the vote that we took at our last meeting on Monday, August the 10th. I want to thank our Vice Chair for doing the legwork of putting that letter together, but it did go out, and hopefully we will get some consideration from the legislators and the Governor, but about our concerns that this bill is moving too fast and not taking into account some of the real needs of police departments like the one here in Millis. So, that letter did go out. I do want to point out to the citizens of the town, a correspondence that I received from our Police Chief, Chiefs of Fire, that Millis Police Department is undergoing a voluntary accreditation program, which has been in the works for a number of years and it's about to launch. It's a very rigorous accreditation program that goes through literally hundreds of points of contact, points of review, sets standards, codifies those standards, and basically achieves many, many of the things which any of this legislation looks to perhaps address. The difference here is, of course, that through the leadership of Chiefs of Fire and our police team, we are voluntarily stepping forward to seek this accreditation, and I want to just make sure that the citizens of Millis realize that our police department is a dynamic department which seeks to do the best it can for our citizens and also strives to do better and improve itself each and every day. So I wanted to just point that out. If my colleagues have any other announcements they'd like to share, I'd ask them to let us know. Mr. Germaine?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment on the police. If they get this level of accreditation, it will mean a great deal to us from an insurance perspective. It actually reduces our rates significantly. So, it's a more, it's a very important aspect of what they're trying to do within the town.
Thank you. Ms. Underhill?
I do not have any announcements.
All right, then, we'll move to our regular agenda. I will let the folks know who may be tuning in. We have two scheduled items that are actually hearings. One hearing is with respect to the Jasper Hill license. That hearing is scheduled for 7 o'clock, so it will not occur until 7:00. We also have another hearing for the water, sewer and stormwater rate hearing. That is scheduled for 7:30, so we will have that rate hearing occur at 7:30, so that people who may want to tune in to that specific, those specific hearings and the specific times, they know that that's the time that they will, that we will be conducting those hearings. So with that, I am going to take a little personal privilege here, and I'm going to skip to item 20-167. 20-167 is with respect to a proposal for the approval of a non-exclusive right-of-way utility easement at Zero Walnut Street. Mr. McKay is here to talk with us about that, the Superintendent of the Department of Public Works, as well as Town Council Kate Federoff. So, I guess I will start with Mr. McKay, and if you can just outline for us what the issue is here, so that we can consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several years ago, the property owner came to approach the board for a gift to the town, and that's situated near the Walnut Street tank. The parcel of land that's owned by the homeowner right now is, it's not landlocked, but the town has an easement for the roadways to enter into the, into the tank. They had first looked at developing that property, with maybe three to four homes, you know, a little small subdivision, and it actually, it did perk for at least two, you know, when they went through the process for septic systems. And then it came down to the fact that, you know, we would still have to have a right of entry to the Walnut Street. They were never stating that they would take that away from the town. And then she, she came up with an idea. Her husband, you know, who was a previous Select Member, was always, you know, gifted many things to the town, the Hayden family is a very generous family to the town, and they felt that, you know, Jane felt that it would be best, I hope you don't mind using the names, Mr. Chairman, but that's, I mean, that's fine. She, you know, she, you know, Jane is the one that's actually gifting the land to the town. She came up with, you know, she needed to make something off of the land without just giving it all to the town. So she came up with one or two, that they would keep one parcel of land and that they would deed the rest of the property to the town, that would be strictly used for water usage and water usage only. And that was about, I'd say about two years ago. So they went through the process of the zoning board. The zoning board approved it, and all that was left was the Selectmen to come up with a contract through the easement process and the gift of this land. So I'll let Kate talk about that. We finally have finished that, and we're ready to, you know, get it over to the board and ask for your signature.
Right, so we just prepared the documentation to convey this easement. So, so in any land transaction, you have a bundle of rights that you have to land, and an easement is one of the rights to the land. So this allows access to the easement area, and as a matter of course, generally speaking, the easement holder has the obligation to maintain the easement area and the condition that it's intended for, so those kinds of agreements are built in there. We are, it's recorded. Once the Selectmen sign it, it will be recorded, so it will run with the land, meaning that if subsequent transfers occur with, say, the property that's encumbered by this easement, it would continue to be to the town to use. So the rights are forever essentially for the town. In this particular easement agreement, because it's for public water supply, we are not obligated to get town meeting approvals. So typically with real estate transactions, whether acquiring or leaving yourself a surplus property, you need town meeting approval, but because this is for a utility purpose, water utility, you don't need town meeting approval. So it's really up for the Board of Selectmen to execute and approve this agreement. Again, pretty standard stuff.
So the request is for us to approve the easement agreement between the town and the property owner?
That's correct.
Which gives us the access to the water tower, so we can continue to service it?
That's right, and there's a drainage component, too, so for runoff, surface runoff, et cetera, because I guess Jim, is the area fairly wet?
Yes, around the tank, it's towards the back of the property, it is wet. And through the zoning process, we, the town, it stated its claim of exactly what the usage of the property would be, and that would be for us to bring our booster station in that area, put a generator, that, because right now, when we lose pressure and we lose power, the people in that general vicinity all lose all water, they have no water pressure because the system in the pump dies out. So this, we have a confined space problem. On Walnut Street, that's right where the booster station is, it's below grade. We would be able to use this property to tie it in, put the generator, and lift it up in, you know, in the next foreseeable few years.
So, questions from my colleagues? I don't hear any questions, and then, so what we would need then is a motion to accept the easement and authorize, is it going to be the Select Board or the Town Administrator to sign it?
I have all of your signatures on it, so you all.
So we need a motion to approve and direct the Select Board members to execute?
That's correct.
So I need that motion.
Okay.
Oh, no, Mr. Germaine?
Oh, go right ahead. Finish, you make your motion.
Since Mr. Germaine is somewhere off in the desert, and therefore is not particularly interested in water towers, I would make a motion with the board, accept the easement agreement with respect to the right-of-way at Zero Walnut Street to service the town water tank and authorize the Select Board members to sign on behalf of the town.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, and we will execute. And again, thank you to Ms. Harden for working with the town and Mr. McKay, and Ms. Federoff for getting all the i's dotted and t's crossed. Now we're just going to allow Ms. Federoff to go hard.
She's there going on vacation.
Yeah. Because we're not getting somebody else from your firm, so.
All right, fantastic, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. You.
Um, I would ask, is Mr. Moore the Veterans Agent? Is he on?
He is.
At this point? Good, so then let's move to 20-164, which is approval of Veterans Parking Spot at the Veterans Memorial Building. And Mr. Moore, our Veterans Agent, has a proposal he'd like to bring to the board.
Thank you. In 2018, Massachusetts legislated the Brave Act, and it, it was a few things that would just provide additional support to veterans and designate a few days, like Purple Heart Day, that Millis just participated in. And one of those things is, quote, municipalities may designate and reserve veterans parking spaces or space at their city or town hall. So, my proposal, I've spoken with Jim, is to the location, and he has or can get the signage, and we're just waiting for the approval.
Thank you. There's another thing you brought forward, which is the local property tax work-off?
Yeah, that's another part of the Brave Act, where they speak to from $1,000 to $1,500 for local property tax work-off for veterans.
And it's a program that specifically relates to veterans, which is distinct from the seniors program that we also, senior tax work-off program.
Correct, this could be for that 27-year-old who just got out of the military and moved to Millis and, and, you know, maybe has a good, a skill of, you know, whether it's computers or, I don't know. Veterans come home with plenty of skills that I think the town could take advantage of.
Perfect. We have questions from the board members.
Questions?
Mr. Germaine?
I feel comfortable with what was presented. Mr. Moore had gone through this with me earlier.
Yes, I mean, I would say that certainly I'm very appreciative of him bringing it forward, certainly a couple of items that I think are very beneficial for the town of Millis, as well as for veterans. So, I would take a motion, and I will not make the motion, approve these two items.
One motion, or two?
Before I do anything.
We can do them together.
My concern is, I am a veteran, I don't know if I should abstain from this.
That if you feel compelled to do that, that's fine, but since you're disclosing,
yeah, I don't think it's a, probably not an issue.
Okay. Well, why don't I let Erin, if she's ruling?
Okay. All right, sure. I move that we, the town designated one parking space at the Millis Town Hall for military veterans, for veteran and military parking only. I also move that we increase the veterans' local property tax work-off program from $1,000 to $1,500.
Second.
I will second the motion, so it's been moved and seconded. So I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, and so we'd ask Mr. McKay to work with Mr. Moore to get that parking spot designated, and then let the, now who is it that administers our work-off program? Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Generally, that's administered through the Senior Director, as well as through the Principal Assessor, the Assistant Assessor for the town, administer that program. I will need to check to ensure that that change does not require town meeting approval. So, we'll have to get back to the board on that, it may require that. And if so, essentially, the vote tonight would basically be voting to put it on, you know, an upcoming town meeting warrant or the board's support for that. But I will get back to the board within the next day or so to confirm that.
Very good, so you'll let us know how we implement this particular vote with respect to the property tax.
Can I just sneak that the Veteran Agent, he handles all the business, it comes out of his office.
Right.
The work-off program, I've had several of them work for me over the years, and he does all the sign-off, he approves it.
Okay.
We signed to it.
Yeah, we already have it, we're just, we're raising the limit from 1,000 to 1,500, which is consistent with what we did for the seniors recently, but we did go to town. Okay, so let's just make sure we understand how we officially implement this, legally implement it, and then work with the Veterans Agent to make sure that veterans who are eligible are able to provide this service to the town. All right, thank you very much. Is the Finance Director on?
Yes. Carol?
Yes, I am.
Yep, she's there.
Okay, so then I'm going to move to item.
I'm here.
Item 20-165, which is approval of federal grants management policies. If you could sort of walk us through that, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, sure. So, over the last few years, I think it's actually since 2014, the Uniform Guidance for Federal Management, for Management of Federal Programs has been around, but the town has never had an official policy. The auditors every year for several years have been asking for the town to update policies and procedures for the federal awards to meet the Uniform Guidance requirement. So this document that you have in front of you now, basically just says that we will account for the federal grants when they come over, we will use, we will include uniform cost principles and audit requirements for the federal awards to non-federal entities. So it just says that we will renew all those federal grants that we get, that we will not apply any expenses toward those grants unless they are 100% accurate, and that we will make those, to the government, we will make them aware of any of our expenses, and that we will abide by all the regulations that the federal government has in response to federal grants.
Okay, so just for the knowledge of our public, what the board has in front of it is essentially a 30-page document, which is an outline of the federal grants management policies, all policies which we are required to follow anyway, but now we have them specifically in writing, and I think this is something that this board has talked about in terms of financial policies and documenting these policies more broadly to include this one, but this is certainly one that we want to make sure that we comply with, because it relates to federal grants and the available use of funds, matching policy, when we have a matching fund policy, the budgets, equipment standards, records retention, all these kinds of things which we are required to do, and now we have a specific policy in place, so that whoever is sitting in the role of Finance Director or whomever now has a policy to go to, and it's not just sort of the best common practice, but now it's documented practice. So I thank the Finance Director for bringing this forward. I mean, it's pretty complex. I don't have any specific questions about it, but I would ask my other colleagues if they have things that they have been looking through this, if they're concerned about or would like to ask questions about.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Germaine?
I reviewed it very briefly, it is very complex, but I did have one question, and that is, it is a complex document. Where did our Director of Finance get it? Is it drafted by us? Is it drafted for the state? How did this get drafted?
This was drafted for another town and adopted by another town, so it has been fully vetted. I did put it before our auditors to make sure that we were in compliance, and they responded back that they looked over the policies and procedures that I provided and appeared to include all the required pieces to be in compliance with the Uniform Guidance. So after your meeting, they would want me to send them a copy of the approval of the policy. One of the other things that we may want to think about is having the Finance Committee review these in agreement and also School Committee. But these are, it's a very standard management policy.
Thank you very much.
Well, just to respond to that, I mean, I think maybe the suggestion here is that this kind of policy be an agenda item also for maybe a tri-board meeting, which we hope to start having, we hope to have a meeting in September, but one of the things we talked about years or so ago at the tri-board when we had our financial advisor in was the need for documenting policies. So, I think we have the opportunity to share it with those groups as well, to your point, Carol, and we have a mechanism to do it, so. Erin, do you have any questions you'd like to pose?
That was just a really good suggestion about having those other entities take a look as well, but, so does that mean we shouldn't make a motion on this tonight and we should wait for tri-board?
Well, my view is that the board can approve it, because that's our approval, and, you know, subject to conversations with the other two entities, because, I mean, the fact of the matter is that federal grants will be administered either from the School Department or the municipal departments. Our Finance Committee, of course, is an oversight committee, so my view would be that we'd go ahead and adopt it, and then we'd share it with those other two folks, other two entities. But Carol, I guess I'd ask you in terms of what the auditor are looking for, in terms of the auditor saying, yep, that makes sense to us.
They're, they're actually following the federal guidelines when it comes to this, you know, it basically is to make sure that you're going to only charge the government for the expenses that are legitimately used for a particular grant, and that you will have, you know, everything open and above board, and that they're open for audit. So we, our auditors will be auditing this on any of the federal grants that come through anyway. So it's, this is just putting, this is our process, and it's putting it on paper, that this is going to be our process, and we will follow it, and that's what will be audited on.
Okay, so I think it'd be a good idea for us to go ahead and adopt it if we don't have a problem with it, and then refer it, prefer the conversation with our colleagues through the tri-board mechanism.
I would concur with that, that we can refer it if there is something substantial they want to have changed. I see no reason why we can't make that amendment to this policy.
I would agree with that, yeah. I mean, if we're working together and we find something we'd like to, you know, adjust, we certainly can work together to make that happen.
Sure.
I don't, policy's in place when they're prepared, because I think that's a task that we need to, we need to continue to address. So I would take a motion on this, then.
I'll move that we, as town, adopt this federal grants management policy for the town.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the federal grants management policy document provided by the Finance Director. Oh, I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, and Carol, I would ask you to, you know, make sure, help us to be sure that when we create the agenda for an early meeting with the tri-board, that we in fact include it on that agenda, so that we don't forget to do that.
Definitely, I will. I'll remind you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, perhaps you would share it with the Finance folks at the School Department anyway, I mean, because we, we should probably at least let them
If it's okay with you, I can send it off to, I'll send it off to the Carol and say just for their review. I mean, it is, the policy is something that's really important for the school to follow as well as the town, because it, you know, in aggregate, if we get $750,000 in a year in federal funds, you know, then it calls for an audit.
Yeah. No, I'm all, I'm fine with that. Let's send it to them and tell them that this is what we adopted, but make it clear to them that if they had issues, we're more than willing to work with them to see if we can resolve it.
Definitely.
Okay. We're not quite a take it or leave it yet. I have a minute or two, because I don't want to jump the gun. We have an item here on the energy, third-party energy supply. Mr. Weiss, is that, is it possible to do that in a minute or two, or do you need more time?
Why don't we do that now? I think we can. Just sent two proposed contracts, or two proposed prices offered to the town for gas and electric. We currently have two favorable gas and electric supply contracts that we signed back in 2017, 2018, through the advice of Tradition Energy, which is our, the town's broker, and we have saved tens of thousands of dollars in the years that we've had that. Right now, we're looking to take advantage of the commodity prices being very low, so Tradition sent out for bid contracts for new prices, for contracts that would start when the current contracts elapse, and that would, these contracts will take us into 2022. So what we're asking the, asking the Select Board tonight to do is to give the Town Administrator and the Energy Manager the authority to sign these contracts tomorrow, when we get the final prices, and the electric contract that we have is just about a half a cent above what we've been paying for the last five years, or four years. The gas contract we're looking at is actually lower than what we've been paying, and so we're, tomorrow, the prices could go up a little bit, so we're asking for a little bit of discretion, but we'd like to be able to sign the contracts that have been, the prices that have been offered to us. Did I just go out?
No, it's me.
Oh, that's you, okay.
Sorry. I was trying to share my screen here. Fine.
Somewhere in the desert.
Yeah, I'm trying to find mine. Can you see everything?
I'm in the valley, to be exact.
I was going to give you this.
Oh, there we are.
Is this helpful, Bob? Can you see this?
Very good, so this is the constellate, the Eversource prices that were sent to us, and we're looking at a four, what we're asking for is a four-year, 48-month contract, which we would be paying at .0991 cents per kilowatt hour. And that is the one that is here at the, well, I can point to it, but it's the one on the right.
Is that?
And that is.
This one, right?
.0991. Right now, I think we're paying .0991. Right now, I think we're paying .0937, so that's about a, we're only talking about a half a cent. We will not find prices any lower than this going forward. That's why we'd like to do this now.
But this is part of the process we go through with a consulting firm for actively monitoring the competitive market, right?
Yes, yes. That would be Tradition Energy, and they're constantly looking at the market. They realize our contracts will be up next year and the year after, so this actually, these contracts will actually start when those contracts elapse. That's why it's even better because we're sure that these prices are going to be going up as the market will be. The commodity, which is mostly gas, is at an all-time low right now.
Okay.
Not an all-time low, but it's not going to get any lower.
So you're looking for the board to approve this proposal or give you the authority to execute the proposal?
Give us the authority to execute the proposals.
On the proposal tomorrow?
Yes.
The price will be, the actual price will be determined tomorrow, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the ever-source contract, the ever-source price will stay, will probably stay the same. It's the, the gas price from Direct Energy, which might change because this price is from August 10th, so that was a week ago. So it shouldn't go up much, but it might go up a little bit.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, if I may.
Mr. Jermaine?
I see Constellation, which is what you're using. What's the EDF? Because I see for 36 months, .0988, which is a small savings. Is that an option and why would we not consider it?
Well, first of all, we're talking about 48 months as opposed to 36 months.
Right.
Constellation also is much more flexible, we have found out in their contracting. We know that Constellation includes, there's a number of other costs that go into these, the main costs, and Constellation will keep those costs in there. We're not so sure about what EDF will do. So we know Constellation is a much, will not go up on that .0991. So I have a lot more confidence in that contract. Sometimes the supply can go up on you depending on what happens in the utility universe.
There's another question from Mr. Kaczynski, really, that is, are we limited to 36 months or can we go to 48 months?
Actually, with utility-type contracts, we can go beyond the three years. It's one of the few areas where you're allowed to go beyond the three-year limit is through a utility purchasing. And just to reinforce what Bob had said, there are pretty substantial differences between the contract conditions that Constellation would provide in EDF, and they would far outweigh the small difference in pricing. And we know that Constellation is a known entity that we are currently doing business with, that we have worked with well, and all those factors combined added the factor that we are recommending a four-year agreement because of the expected increases in energy costs going into the future. So we think that the 48-month bid from Constellation is the best for the town.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? So you're looking for us to approve the electric purchase and the gas purchase, is that right?
That is correct.
But the electric is only, is a 36-month bid?
The electric is a 48-month bid, the gas is a 36-month bid.
Okay, so then I would take a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the recommendation of the energy manager and town administrator for using the services of Constellation to, is there anyone else there? For a 48-month contract at the moment, .0991, but to be finalized within the next couple of days.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the board to approve the proposal relating to Constellation Energy. Authorized town administrator and the energy manager to execute that agreement. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
The motion is carried unanimously, so that takes care of energy for tonight.
Do we also have Direct Energy to deal with?
That would be the gas.
That's the gas for 36 months. I did the one.
Yeah, I asked that, but I, so we want to do the other one as well, right?
Yes.
I'll move, I'll move that we adopt the 36-month plan from Direct Energy, presently at 6.359, and again, apparently to be negotiated for the next 36 months.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposal from Direct Energy. Authorized the town administrator and the energy manager to execute an agreement for 36 months. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're a few minutes late now, but I think that it's time for us now to move to item number 20-162. This is an item relating to the three licenses that are currently being held by Jasper Hill, the liquor license, the entertainment license, and the common vicar license. There's been issues that have come up with respect to those licenses indicating that this board needs to consider whether or not the licensee is still in compliance with the requirements of the licenses. So we're going to have a presentation or discussion led by our town council. I would like to know before we begin that, are there members of the public and/or representatives of the licensee who would also like to speak tonight? Because I want to make sure that everybody is recognized. All right, I don't hear anything at this point. If either of those folks wants to participate and join the call, they're free to do so. We do have a written document that has been provided by the owner and the licensee, which we will consider as part of this conversation about the licenses. So there is a written statement from the licensee for us to deliberate about. So with that said, I would like to turn the conversation to town council, Brian Winter, who is working with us on these licenses to make sure that we hold the hearing in a reasonable way and consider all the factors before we take any action. So, Mr. Winter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. I hope everyone can hear me okay.
Yep.
I'm seeing heads nodding, so it looks like my internet is working sufficiently. I'm still minimized, so I hope everyone can see me in my Hollywood square right now. My name is Brian Winter. I'm an attorney at New Tallerman &amp; Costa. I offer services to town council. And Mr. McCaffrey, as you said, I've been working with the town as the Jasper Hill licensing matters, and as you referenced, there are three separate licensing matters before the board. I'm going to say a few words just on the posture of this case and sort of the procedural aspects that are before the board this evening, and then I'll go into the substance. And as you also referenced, I've provided some documentation to the board for the board's consideration. Hopefully, you all have that packet virtually or physically in front of you. It consists of two separate packages essentially. One are proposed findings and a proposed order, and the second is an exhibit package of various exhibits that I collected for tonight. So hopefully, you have those, and if you haven't had a chance to read them, it's okay. I'm going to walk you through them very briefly. So as far as the procedural aspects and sort of the posture of this, this is going to be a little bit unorthodox in the sense that, from what I heard earlier during introductions, there's no one on this Zoom call that's going to be representing Jasper Hill. I didn't hear any responses from members of the public, although that may change as we get a little further into this. There are two emails that I'll reference that we received sort of later in the afternoon today, sort of at the 11th hour before this evening's hearing. But aside from that, you're going to be hearing mainly from me this evening, I believe. So normally, this is somewhat of an adjudicatory hearing. The statutes provide for due process, notice of the hearing, an opportunity to be represented by council, an opportunity to present your case on behalf of the licensee, an opportunity to hear what violations are being alleged or suggested. And I, in my role as town council, sort of take off that cap for a brief period when I'm in front of the board on these matters, and I put on what's essentially a prosecutor's cap, and I present essentially the case to the board for the board's consideration, and the board members essentially act as judges and hear that case and then hear from both sides and deliberate, make a decision. And when you go into deliberations, I then put on my town council cap again, and I'll assist you with what the legal requirements are and what the parameters of your decision-making can be. So this evening, it might be a little bit different than that since there isn't another party to present the case, it's just me. So that's just a word about the posture of this this evening. So in terms of the substance, and I'll try to be as succinct as I can be, given I've seen you have a lengthy agenda that includes two other attorneys from my office this evening, I believe. So I'll try to go through this as succinctly as possible, but if anyone has any questions or if you're not understanding the document I'm referencing or any of the statements I made, please just stop me. I'll slow down and I'll try to answer your question. So there are three separate licenses held by Jasper Hill. There's a common vic license, an entertainment license, and a liquor license, and all three of those exist under different statutory schemes. So when we're going through the allegations and the different findings that I'm going to ask the board to make at the end of this, try to keep those separate because they're all under different statutory authorities. That being said, the reason for the hearing this evening all overlaps. It's all a common thread between all three. So let me begin with how this matter came about. It came to the town's attention that two things had possibly occurred. One is that the Jasper Hill restaurant and facility had potentially gone out of business, closed, or was at least not presently operating. It also came to the town's attention that perhaps their liquor liability insurance and their workers' comp insurance either was no longer in good standing or had lapsed or expired, et cetera. Those were allegations. We did not have proof one way or the other that that was the case. So I'm going to direct your attention to the exhibit package that I provided to the board. Exhibit A is the first piece of correspondence that the town issued regarding this process. It's essentially an information request. It's dated June 25th, and it requested that the licensee, Jasper Hill, through its corporate officials and representatives, respond to an information request. And what was asked for was essentially three things. One, communication. We've heard allegations. We would like you to communicate with us regarding those allegations. Two, we would like proof that you are currently carrying liquor liability insurance. And three, we would like proof that you're carrying workers' compensation insurance. Between 6/25, that's June 25th, and July 15th, the town received no response. So you'll see as exhibit A, a true and accurate copy of that correspondence. Towards the end of that exhibit, you'll see what are the returned certified mailings. To my knowledge, the actual regular mail packages were not returned to the town, just the certified mailings as undeliverable and collected.
Would I just interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Yes, I want to go back to the criteria you talked about, which is liquor liability and the workers' compensation policies.
Mm-hmm.
More for us to grant a license in the first place. The applicant has to show those two, that those two things are in force and effect, right?
That's correct. So I was going to circle back to the legal findings towards the end, but why don't I touch upon them now since you raised it? There are two important factors with respect to the liquor license in particular, but certainly with respect to the common vic license and the entertainment license. With respect to the liquor license, the ABCC has a mandatory alcohol liquor liability insurance requirement. It went into effect in 2010. You cannot hold a liquor license without that insurance. So that's a sin qua non. They have to have that insurance in order to maintain the license. The workers' comp, obviously, if you have employees and you're operating a business that carries an entertainment license and a common vic license, those are requirements of the application process. There are also requirements of you granting the license. So both of those things are prerequisites to holding all three of those licenses. So that was the nature of the inquiry. If the applicant fails to provide proof or fails to satisfy the board's inquiry that they currently hold those insurances, those would be violations of the requirements of those licenses and grounds to initiate and then to take action after a public hearing. So that's why those were the subject matters of that initial information request.
Okay.
The second piece of correspondence, which is exhibit B of your package, dated July 15th, and that's a letter from me, from my office, and it's a town council demand letter. So that follows up on exhibit A, the information request. It restates the same information request, although it escalates it. It's from town council, and it gave the license holder, Jasper Hill, a second chance. And this time, you'll see towards the end of the letter, it very clearly states that a failure to respond and a failure to come forward and communicate and provide sufficient and adequate proof that these insurances are in place would be grounds for the board to initiate a public hearing and consider discipline on the licenses. And each one of those licenses is specified in that letter. I should also note, just for the sake of the record, that all of these letters were sent to two separate addresses, and these addresses were found at the Secretary of the Commonwealth website, Rock Lawn Restaurants LLC, DBA Jasper Hill, which has the 270 Exchange Street address, as well as Northwest Registered Agent Services, Inc., which is the registered agent on the Secretary of the Commonwealth website, and they carry an address of 82 Wendell Avenue, Suite 100, Pittsfield, Mass. So each of these were sent by certified and by first-class mail to those addresses. So that was sent on July 15th. As of August 3rd, still no response of any way, shape, or form had been received by the town. That precipitated what you'll see as exhibit C, which is the notice of this public hearing. So once again, the same information request was made, although this time it was in a different form. It was the basis of convening this public hearing tonight. So this is the third opportunity for Jasper Hill to respond. It was sent to the same addresses. As you'll see, there's a photocopy on page one of exhibit C, which shows the certified mailing. And the last two pages are again references to the outstanding licenses and the license numbers and copies of those licenses. So between the August 3rd, third piece of correspondence, and yes, today, I should say, around noon, there still had been no response in any way, shape, or form, one way or the other, to these three pieces of correspondence, all three again asking for the same communication and response with respect to the insurance policies. What's not included in your package and what I'd like to be sort of referenced, and if we can administratively just sort of mark it as an exhibit D for your record on this, would be the two emails that we received today. So, Mr. McCaffrey, you referenced these earlier during your introductions, and I'm just going to, you know, briefly refer to them just by the date and time. The first email, Monday, August 17th, 2017. The first email, Monday, August 17th, 2020, at 2:33 PM. It's a two-paragraph email, and it's signed, "Thank you, John Tracy, Denise Tracy, Jasper Hill Restaurants." I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I will read the last sentence of the first block paragraph. If you have it in front of you, you can follow along. It starts at the third to last line and then continues down to the end of that block paragraph. And it says, "During the time we were open, we had full insurance coverage, including liquor liability and workers' comp. We have since allowed that to lapse, given our situation." So there's more in this email, but it speaks for itself, and you can all read it. The second email is a response to that, also dated today, Monday, August 17th, 2020, at 4:57 PM. And it's from Karen Barrett, and it states, "John, will you be attending the hearing this evening? Question mark. Here is the Zoom link." And then the body of the email is, of course, the credentials for this evening's hearing. So this is a fourth opportunity and notice of tonight's hearing and meeting, and an opportunity for Representative Jasper Hill, either John Tracy or Denise Tracy, to appear here this evening, make a statement, or put on whatever case with whatever counsel they saw fit. So those are the four exhibits that I'd asked the board to consider. The last one, I'm just going to continue to refer to it as Exhibit D for the record. And the reason I highlighted that last sentence is because to the extent that there was a lack of information and clarity as to the status of the insurance up to this afternoon around lunchtime, it's now been confirmed by John Tracy and Denise Tracy that in fact they have allowed the liquor liability insurance and the workers' compensation insurance to lapse. They also have a request in that last email, so I don't mean to give it short shrift. I'll read that as well before I conclude here. And it says, "We respectfully ask the board not to revoke our licenses as of yet, as we are negotiating a plan to conceivable," and I'm reading that verbatim, "reopen the restaurant. If we are successful, we will need them to operate. At such time, we will provide proof of coverage." So that's the closing sentence of that email. So those are the facts that you have before you with respect to the three factors that we inquired on. And I'm just going to run down them one last time so that, before you go into your next step here, I can focus you on them. One is communication. I did a calculation from June 25th to today, and that's 53 days. So 53 days we've been asking for proof of insurance and communication, proof of the status of the business, and we didn't receive any communication until 2:33 this afternoon. Two is obviously the status of the insurance, which we now know from John and Denise Tracy have been allowed to expire. And three was, is the business still operating, or what's the status of the business generally? And they've confirmed that they're not open, they're not operating now, although they have aspirations to do so in the future. The reason I mentioned that last point, and you'll see in our notice of hearing, there's a statute under the liquor licensing laws, and that's Chapter 138, Section 77, which states that an operation that is closed may no longer hold a liquor license. Now, that's not automatic, it's not by operation of law. The licensing authority in this case, the Board of Selectmen, has the option to notice a hearing and cancel a license if a business closes, but the statute specifically authorized as the board to do so when a business closes. So that's the third legal prong. So before I turn it back over to the board, I just want to close in saying that, you know, those are the several points that we made in our information request, the town council demand, the notice of public hearing. We now have some uncontested evidence before the board as the status of each one of those. Each one of those constitutes a violation of the licensing requirements that are a prerequisite to holding these three licenses, the amusement, excuse me, the entertainment, the common vic, or the liquor license. So I think the board has enough to consider at this point in terms of the scope of why this hearing was convened, and I'm happy to answer any questions as the board moves on to the next phase of this.
Nope, Jimmy muted.
No, I'm back.
Thank you.
I was just saying, thank you, to town council for the briefing. I would observe that in terms of the information in front of us, we have a business which is no longer operating and a business which does not have liquor liability insurance or workers' comp insurance. So I think that that's a lot of compelling factors, in my view. We have certainly worked with businesses in the past and helped them, invited them back to us when they had those insurances. So we're not precluding this from perhaps turning into a grant down the road, but right now, seems to me anyway, we have evidence, clear evidence, as well as statements from the licensees, that they are not in compliance with these two requirements. So I'd asked Mr. Germaine and Ms. Underhill if they have questions for town council.
I don't have any. I thought it was quite clear. I think I understand it, and I think we understand where we need to move from here.
Thank you. Ms. Underhill?
I don't have any specific questions at this time.
Okay, so I would ask again, just to make sure that someone didn't log in while we were having this discussion. Is there anyone in the audience on the call who would either make a statement as the applicant, licensee, or a member of the public? I want to give anyone who has an opportunity to have that chance now. All right, so I don't hear any. At this point, I would like to ask council then, what is the role of the board here in making findings of fact that will lead us to take whatever action we're going to take with respect to these licenses?
So Mr. Chairman, the next step, and now I'm putting back on my town council hat, is for the board to make factual findings based on the evidence you've heard this evening, and then to make a conclusion based on that, a conclusion of law, which is whether or not a violation occurred. And then the last is to issue an order. So you can take those one step at a time. I took the liberty of drafting some proposed findings, which I did in three paragraphs, one for each license. So you'll see the first sentence of each paragraph is the factual finding, the sentence concludes with whether or not that's a violation, and then the last statement in the paragraph is whether action on the license is warranted, and specifically a revocation under the circumstances. So these are drafts. These should be deliberated and considered by the board. So if you'd like, I'm happy to read them one at a time. If you'd like to do it a different way, of course, I'm open to however you prefer to proceed. But that would be the next step, to first decide whether or not you can make a finding that the insurance has lapsed or is no longer in place. That's the factual finding, the legal finding, if does that constitute a violation? And the third is, what would you do about it as the licensing authority?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Can I interject for a minute? Brian, do they need to close the hearing at this point, or?
You don't have to. You can deliberate at the same time. And in this particular case, since we have the unusual circumstances of, you know, not having the applicant or the licensee represented, this may be one of those times where you don't want to close it in case there's a last-second appearance, but you're also welcome to close it. If you feel that you've given everyone an ample opportunity, I'm just looking at my clock and it says 7:32. So if you feel you've given everyone an ample opportunity, you're also welcome to close the public hearing and then proceed to deliberation. But it's really your choice to the board.
Well, the fact is that if we close the hearing, then we're not going to take any more testimony. We would act based upon the information that we had received. And I'd like to suggest to the board that we, in fact, close the hearing. I mean, we have heard the information, we have received written comments from the applicant, we've invited the applicant here, and so I think probably the best course for us then would be to go ahead and close the hearing and vote on our findings and determine what we're going to do with the license. So I think-
I'll move and second it. Close the hearing.
Second.
We moved and seconded that the board close the hearing with respect to the Jasper Hill licenses for liquor license, common vic license, and entertainment license. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
All right, the motion is carried, the hearing is closed, now we will move to the And attorney, our attorney can go through them. We have language in front of us. I think one of the items is going to be changed slightly because we didn't hear from them, but if you could, Attorney Winner, if you could go through with us the findings that you're recommending that we vote on.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'll begin with number one, and I'm just going to read through it. And if anyone has any suggestions or changes at the end, or questions, please let me know, but I'll just go through them one at a time. And you'll see that there's a bracketed statement at the very beginning of that sentence, because I obviously didn't know ahead of time if there was going to be additional testimony or evidence contradicting or contesting any of these points. So I'm just going to strike the word "uncontested" for now, and just leave the weight of the evidence in. So I'll read it as follows. "The weight of the credible testimony and evidence before the board convincingly demonstrates that Jasper Hill has failed to maintain and operate its establishment in a manner that serves," in quotes, "the public good as set forth in General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 2, by one, failing to respond to the town's repeated information requests, two-"
I think we should strike number one.
Right. Because we've now received it today.
Yeah.
"Two, by failing to maintain a valid liquor liability insurance and/or workers' compensation insurance, and three, by shuttering the business without notice. Revocation of its common vicuors license is therefore warranted." So striking number one as suggested, I'm just going to make a note about on my copy. That would be finding number one.
To the common vic license, right?
Yes.
Well, I would ask the board, if the board is willing to make this finding that in fact they failed to maintain a valid liquor liability license and shuttering the business without notice, and therefore the revocation of its common vic license is warranted. I would make a motion that the board enter this finding as substantiated by the information that was during the hearing.
Second.
So it's a move and seconded with respect to this finding of fact. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
So the first finding is with respect to the common vic license, as we discussed with a slight change of the wording originally proposed. So item number two.
And if I may, just pause for a moment. On item number one, since we struck reason number one, I'm changing reasons number two and three to reasons number one until, just so it reads grammatically correctly. Finding number two, "The weight of the credible testimony and evidence before the board convincingly demonstrates that Jasper Hill has failed to maintain and operate its establishment in a manner that does not," in quotes, "adversely affect the public health, safety, or order as set forth in Chapter 140, Section 183A, by," and I'm again to be consistent with the first finding, going to strike reason number one. So I'm moving on to reason number two, which is now going to be one, "by failing to maintain a valid liquor liability insurance and/or workers' compensation insurance, and by two, shuttering the business without notice. Revocation of its entertainment license is therefore warranted."
Okay, so this is the third finding, and I would make a motion that the board approve this finding of fact with respect to the entertainment license.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
So the second finding is entered into the record. Now, item number three.
Item number three, "The weight of the credible testimony and evidence before the board convincingly demonstrates 'good cause,' in quotations, to revoke the liquor license as set forth in GL, Chapter 138, and including but not limited to GL, Chapter 138, Sections 12 and 64A, and 204 CMR 2.00 at sec. In that, Jasper Hill has failed to maintain a valid liquor liability insurance and/or workers' compensation insurance, and has shuttered the business without notice, each and all of which are violations of the law, in particularly General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 77." The next sentence, which begins with the word additionally, refers to their failure to respond. I'm assuming, consistent with the other findings, I will strike that sentence. So I'm going to skip to the last sentence. Revocation of its liquor license is therefore warranted. That's the third suggested finding.
This is the third finding with respect to the liquor license, in accordance with the language which is provided to the board, by striking the failure to respond language. So I think the motion that the board accept this finding of fact with respect to the liquor license.
Second.
I moved and seconded that the board adopt this finding of fact. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
The motion is carried, and the finding is entered into the record. So town council, having done these, made these findings, is it now appropriate for us to vote to revoke the licenses, or does that already sort of taken into account based upon the findings?
Mr. Chairman, I think you should take a separate vote, and if you turn to the next page, I've actually drafted some specimen language that the board may wish to consider. So even though you've made the factual findings that now support the board's feeling that a revocation would be warranted, I think you need to now move to an actual order cancelling and revoking the licenses and setting a timeframe for doing so. You'll see, and I'll just read it aloud with your permission, Mr. Chairman, so that you can hear what I'm talking about. In the draft motion that I prepared says, "In consideration of the above findings," meaning the findings you just made, "I move that the board revoke and cancel liquor license number 04285RS0716, common vicuors license number 448, and entertainment license number 447, effective five business days from the date of the board's written notice." And I just wanted to point out, the reason I chose or chose to suggest the five days is that's the appeal period on the liquor license. So they still are going to have an opportunity to appeal the board's decision tonight, they have five days to file that appeal from the date of the board's written notice. So what happens after this evening is we'll prepare that notice, we'll prepare a written letter, and we'll send it out certified in regular mail again with the three findings made by the board and the board's order, and then once that goes out, they have five days. So we typically don't want the order to become effective until the appeal period expires. So once the appeal period expires, the board's order becomes effective.
Okay, I understand. So any further questions? Board members willing to move forward with this order, or any modifications you'd like to see?
I'm willing to move forward as discussed by the town council.
Okay. Ms. Underhill?
Same, thanks.
All right, so just to make sure that we have all our, again, i's dotted and t's crossed, I will make the motion- crossed, I will make the motion, uh, in consideration of our findings, I move that the board revoke and cancel liquor license number 04285-dash-RS, I'm sorry, 285-RS-0716, common victual license number 448, and entertainment license number 447, effective five business days from the date of this board's written notice.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, enter this order of revocation. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey? Yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
All right, the motion is carried and the order is entered. So we will look to town council then to prepare the written notice to the applicant, to the licensee, and, uh, move forward from there.
Understood.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I was just saying, one housekeeping matter, um, of course, I'll prepare that notice, um, along with your staff, and we will have it ready for signature, uh, from the board, and you can either have it returned to the board for all the members to sign, or you could authorize one of the members to sign it on behalf of the board, whatever the board's pleasure might be. I'll prepare it either way.
Um, okay.
Yes, Mr. Jermaine? Yes, that we just have the chair, uh, sign for the three of us.
Um, I'd be happy to do that, except I won't be able to do it tomorrow. So if we want to send this out tomorrow, uh, we'd have to designate another member. Which is fine with me, I mean, um...
That's fine.
I'm around as well.
I'm around.
I would make a, well, we direct the vice chair to execute this on behalf of the board.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried, thank you, Pete, for that, I mean, I, I don't want it to late, uh, even another day, because we try to be diligent here. Um, so that's the way we'll proceed, we'll be able to notify them. Speaking of my behalf, um, if this applicant were to reassemble its business and, you know, propose to enter into, uh, the business at the location and meet all the rules, we're more than happy to consider a new application. Uh, but at this stage of the game, uh, there are just, you know, the applicant simply does not comply with the statutory requirements, so from a public safety point of view, I think it's our obligation to act in this fashion, so. Okay, thank you to town council for helping us get through this, I appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
And where no one is celebrating the closing of a business in Melas, that's for sure. Um, so anyway, thank you so much.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, which is scheduled for 7:30, but not too far off, um, is a matter relating to the FY21 water sewer and stormwater rates. Um, we have a rate hearing scheduled for, for tonight, uh, which is the opportunity for a proposal to be made to us on behalf of the town administration and the DPW, for the board to consider the setting of rates for these enterprise funds for the coming fiscal year. So, um, what I'm going to do in terms of this hearing is to notice that, to, to ask Mr. McKay to commence the hearing, we understand there's going to be a presentation as well, and, um, we have some slides to share with the public so they can, uh, go along with the presentation, and this is for the board members and also the members of the public to ask questions about this presentation, because at the end of the discussion, we will be asked to, um, vote to set rates if we feel comfortable based upon the information that we received. But in any event, uh, this is an important hearing, which is going to affect all the users of the enterprise funds, and we want to give everyone the chance to, to ask questions if they'd like to, so. I will start with asking Mr. McKay to begin the discussion, uh, for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think you have to open the public hearing.
Yes, so, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm going to make a motion that the, uh, board, I guess acting as the water and sewer commissioners, uh, opens the public hearing with respect to the establishment of fiscal year 21 water and sewer rates.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I'll poll the board to open the hearing. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
All right, so the hearing, the hearing will begin, similar to the hearing we had before, the process is for the board to consider all the facts and circumstances, ask its questions, and then make a determinate, and then close the hearing so that we can make a determination and actually vote on the rates. Uh, but this part of the process, which is the hearing process, is designed to allow, uh, discussion among the board, discussion from the public, as well as the presentation to the public, uh, to the board as water and sewer commissioners with respect to rate setting. So, having said that, Mr. McKay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with me is, uh, Michael Schrader, and the presentation was, uh, presented to, um, the finance director, Carol Johnson, most importantly, the town administrator, Mike Kaczynski, and Jen Skanel, the treasurer collector, and we all, uh, agreed that this, um, what, when Mike will give you the presentation of the rate setting, uh, at the end of it. Uh, I will turn it over to him right now, and if I can just make a couple of comments when he's done, um, so I can give you an idea of where we came up with these figures. So, Mike, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, I do not, I can't tell if there's new people since last year or different people, so I'm going to try to go at a moderate clip, I know you have a full agenda, and I'm going to try really hard to do as good a job as your counsel did on his presentation. So, uh, with that, um, so this is an update, we've been updating...
Trouble with that comment is, we thought we were memorable.
Yeah, it's hard, it's the whole...
We were going to barely remember you when you sent the bill.
Excuse me one more, Mike, did you want to share, uh, share a screen?
Oh, sure.
Or do, yeah, you should be able to do that.
Yep, let me, uh...
Yeah, is it allowing you to do that?
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's just, you come up with 75 options when you go to share.
I know, I know.
Come on, have to make sure you get it right down.
There we go.
There we are. Ah, well done. Bravo.
Okay, so you're seeing the, uh, title slide there?
Yes.
So, as the, um, title says, this is an update. So we've been doing this for, I think this is our third year, and, um, we look at each year the, how the actuals go, and then revise projections and revise capital and, and that sort of thing. And it, so it gives, um, you as the board of water and sewer commissioners that long-term view as well as the short view, what's in front of you. Um, and, so what I wanted to do was just go through, um, sort of quickly, some of the introduction, uh, in terms of what are the principles and goals, and then the, um, what the update and the findings are. This is a pretty, um, I think it's fairly straightforward, the good news is, we're not proposing increases, so keep the rest easy on that. Um, in terms of the principles and goals, uh, I think that what's important to know is as the water and sewer commission, um, especially as the utility, the job is to do what you need to do to run the utility, uh, in terms of your regulatory requirements, um, and in terms of providing the level of service that your community is used to, and, and sometimes that comes to odds with, uh, things like rate setting. Um, so this is a good intermix, I think, or a good interface between those two things. So we want to make sure that all your requirements are met, uh, whichever they are, you're fully staff, we're carrying, you know, a full, uh, staff of both water and sewer, and importantly, that you're conducting proactive repair and maintenance and maintaining the system. And that's the, that's the first step, and that's how we develop the revenue requirements or the, um, expenses that you need to cover. Then we look at the next step is, you know, any rate structure will, can deliver those, um, revenues to cover those costs, but we want to look at how are those costs distributed? Uh, are they fair and equitable to users, and are they reflective of their cost causation on the, um, on the utility? And then from there, other considerations are just looking at usage trends, um, the rate design itself, and if you have any permit, uh, issues or limitations, and that's, uh, most, well, it's water answer. So anyway, um, what we do is, we maintain a spreadsheet model of the, both the water and the sewer enterprise, and we update that with, um, a variety of data, uh, we can get budget to actuals, and the operating expenses, the debt schedule, your capital plan, that's probably one of the most, uh, changeable, um, parts of this whole thing, that's how we decide what the costs look like coming up. Um, then to project the revenues, we don't project revenue per se, we look at usage data and see what the usage trends look like, and then we calculate the revenue from there. And that gives us a new better control of, um, over our error and, you know, our calibration and that kind of thing, so we, we have a better feel for, um, the accuracy of the, of the projections. And then we bring it down, um, combine the expenses and the revenues, calculate the net revenue, and to start, we just adjust the rates, um, across the board to maintain a fund balance. Uh, we target 20% of operating expenses, and then of course, the, um, you know, the real important thing is to look at the user costs and see how they come out and see how they're impacting your, your rate payers and your, um, people that live in your town. And then news, might be new for you this year, was, we've added a, um, another affordability index that we can talk about that, that helps, just adds context to the, for the numbers. So, uh, having said that, looking at water, um, first, so water and sewer, I'm happy to report that FY20, uh, closed, or, or the actuals were both better than, um, projected. And the reason for that is that, you know, we're intentionally conservative when we project, and we'd always rather be a little short than fall short. So it was, uh, fairly close, and it was a little bit both on revenue being a little higher, usage has generally been up a little bit this year, and, um, expenses, you know, I mean, it's pretty clear, everybody's watching everything a little closer, so expenses were a little lower than budgeted, and, uh, revenues were a little higher than expected, so, looking at that, um, and the, uh, the reserve balance is, is quite healthy going into FY21. So what we're modeling here, what we're showing is, um, and just to pause and make a distinction, the red, um, bar here is to remind us that we're only looking at the one year's rates right now, and even though you're approving rates one at a time, one year at a time, I think it's still important to look ahead to see, you know, what you can expect next year. Um, so in case you remember, when I come back, you're going to say, well, you said 3.5%, how come it's, you know, 4 or 2 next year? Because we're going to watch and see how FY21 does. So what we're looking at is, like I said, you have a healthy, um, fund balance right now in water, and as you can see, we're looking to spend that down, and that helps manage the cost of these future increases while also paying for, um, a capital improvement program. So, um, just as a point of order, the proposed water rates, uh, the FY21 rates are shown right here, there is no rate increase proposed for FY21, so maintain the same, um, rates that you have. And then on the next page, oh, okay, so, um, I'm sorry, I should pause there, are there any questions? So, I'm going to keep going, um, and you can always, we can always go back, we can go into more detail or whatever, it's probably better to kind of keep it up, you know, somewhat brisk pace, so we don't keep you here till 10 o'clock. Similarly, in sewer, um, FY20, it, it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't huge, but it was a little bit, um, plus on both less expenses and a little bit higher revenues, um, so, again, nothing projected for FY21 for terms of a rate increase, and then from there, there will be, uh, a series of rate increases. Again, that's based on the projections, based on the capital improvement plan, and, um, you know, as things change or become updated in the future, we fine tune as we go. And the, you know, part of the goal is, you want to favor the, um, the present year that we're in, because that's the most accurate, that's the most pressing, especially now in the middle of this pandemic. Um, but I also look at balancing out the rest of this analysis period, meaning, you know, we could show nothing, 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 and then a really high rate increase, um, but I don't, you know, that doesn't help, and it makes it harder for people to adjust to, so it's sort of a balance between the, the here and now and the, um, projected in the future. Um, in terms of capital, what you're basically supporting, I'm going to see if I can, uh, oops, sorry, um, trying to, uh, I'm using the presentation mode for the first time, so I'm clearly not, uh, zooming in well. Uh, presumably you all have this in front of you, um, this is a summary of the capital costs for the capital improvement program for the water, um, at the top, and then for the sewer on the bottom. Um, on the water side, there's some water main replacements, the town maintains its, uh, sort of its program or its, uh, practice of replacing aging water mains, which is , uh, good for everybody. The, another big item that's been talked about a lot is the DPW garage, and we're showing that starting to come on, uh, as debt in FY23. Um, we've got, uh, a new innovative asset management program for your water tank that's going to start, uh, to hit in this coming year, and then, um, some rehab work at your Farm Street Water Tank. So that's a, um, sort of a well-balanced capital improvement plan for your water. On the sewer, uh, similarly, uh, town got to actually push back a couple of projects that weren't as pressing right now, these first two, infiltration and inflow, I'm sure you've heard, um, riveting stories about that, but that's a, one of the constant sort of aches and pains of a sewer system as they weaken, this is a maintenance item, and that they're, uh, required by the state, and it's also good because you pay for all of the sewage that you send to, um, over here in Medway, so that helps, um, you know, maintain your costs there. And, uh, again, the DPW garage, so that's being split between, uh, the two enterprises, a third, a third, and then I believe a third goes to the general fund. So, you know, nothing, um, too extravagant here, this is a standard, uh, sort of level of investment for the size of your system. Um, the next thing that I look at is, what is the cost of a, um, typical residential water and sewer bill? And I say typical, I guess it's more target, um, I'm specifically not saying average or mean or median, because water use is a, uh, highly discretionary thing, and there's, you know, baseline water use, which is what you need to cook and clean and, you know, take care of yourself, and then there's discretionary water use, which is, um, everything else. So what I mean is, you don't want to look at average because that sways by the, uh, really big users, what you want to look at is reasonable, and for that, um, we used a, um, a four-person household using 65 gallons per day. Uh, 65 gallons per day is the state, state's goal for water conservation, which means, uh, it's, I don't want to say it's generous, but it's a, it's a fair, it's a reasonable amount. Um, 50 gallons a day per person is what we would consider to be like a, a winter time or just a base essential water use. So this includes some, um, you know, some outdoor water use, and four people is, is pretty generous for, uh, for Melas in terms of a family size. And four people is is pretty generous for for Milis in terms of a family size. If you look across, or if you look at the census data, it'd be more like 2.2 or something. And all this means is that we're basing this on an average family or a typical family using a reasonable amount of water. Now, why I say that is because your cost for your water and sewer is based on how much water and sewer you use. And I'm sure everybody's aware, but they use the water, the metered water use for sewer because there's no real easy way to measure sewer directly. So having said that, we calculate them and we look at it now and we look at it in the future. The top here is a quarterly bill. The bottom is really what's important is the annual cost. Or at least that's how we look at it in terms of affordability and impact and those kind of things. So, you know, a number is a number until you put it in context. And the two things that we do to put it in context is we look at, how did you fare or how does this compare against other communities? And for that, what I'm looking at here or showing is the annual water and sewer cost from our 2017 Massachusetts Rate Survey. We'll up it again, re-up it again next year. And what I'm showing here is for water, this is the high in the sample size that we've got, which I think is like 120 systems. Then the orange is the middle and the bottom gray is the very low. And the black here is Milis. So you compare very favorably to the average from three years ago. So I look at that and I think that's, you guys are right in the middle here. Similarly, for sewer, you're just a smidge above the average. But again, it's, you know, by no means you go towards the high side. So that is dollars, if you will, dollar outlay. And then, like I said, the latest thing that we've added is an affordability assessment. And if anybody's ever heard of the sort of the rule of thumb that you hear is that your water and sewer or your sewer actually should be around 2% of your median household income. Let's just say if any, if people have any familiarity with affordability, that's what they've heard. And that's an old EPA indicator was used for the sewer separation days when communities were pushing back saying we can't afford this. So they developed that. And basically, they developed it in 1997. And since then, the water sewer industry has been criticizing it for not being a great indicator. So lo and behold, a joint group funded a another joint group to do a better evaluation. They reviewed every every sewer and water affordability indicator that I'm familiar with, went through them all, looked at them and came up with a better way to assess household affordability. And they called it the household indicator, household burden indicator. And essentially, that's two items here. It looks at the prevalence of poverty in your community. And then what is the household burden? Which instead of using the median household income, which was probably the targeted criticism of the old method, they use the 20th percentile, the lowest quintile. And that that's a much lower threshold than the median. In Milis, your median was 85,000 and that lowest quintile is 43,000. So we're comparing it to a much lower income range, which is a better reflection of economically challenged population. And then your poverty, I can't say that word, prevalence of poverty actually comes out quite good. And that looks at what percentage of your community is at or below 200% of the federal poverty level, which if this is the first time you're hearing this information, it's a lot of acronyms and stuff. But the federal poverty level is something that is broadly used for, you know, things like the food stamps and other assistance programs. So it's a it's a key indicator. And in this case, they're looking at what percent is 200% above the poverty level. So sort of a long story short, I'm looking at FY '28 based on those projections we've shown. And you're still projected to be at a low burden. So this is as opposed to me saying you can afford that. It's just an indicator. It adds context. It's it's like the the temperature, you know. I'm not going to say if it's hot or cold. I'll say it's 73 degrees and, you know, people can take it as that as they want. So I think that is the last slide. I went through that fairly briskly. I'm happy to go back or I'm happy to, you know, answer questions or let you get on with your agenda. Do whatever you wish.
Okay, thank you. I will ask the members of the board if they have questions. And not to put anybody on the spot, but either my colleagues have questions?
I do have a question. This is somewhat to you, Mike, but I think more to Jim. We've obviously been hearing recently about PFAS, which is going to, of course, cause some adjustments here. Have we tried to take any of these, I'll call them mandates, I don't know what else to call them at this point, into account for when they might be implemented and what that will have to do to the rate payers?
So I can quickly answer that, Pete. The PFAS, as of right now, everything came back. It was still below the the level of 20. We just finished testing the last well that we just put online. I believe that the state, you know, the chair, they would like to come and meet with the board through Zoom or if you're back live then in September, maybe the second week, you know, second meeting in September. And they would morgue all of the costs. But we did not build in any cost of the PFAS of any remediation if needed. Because right now, we don't, we don't have any needed.
That's fine. Thank you very much. And my last question, I think I saw it in here, but any outstanding well maintenance or anything that might not have been included in here?
The only big ticket item that we're working on, other than the, you know, the Farm Street Tank that bid and that RFP is due this Thursday. We had a problem at well four with a pipe being, there was a fluoride chemical had clogged up the entire pipe. And I think if you remember back about eight or nine years ago, we had the same problem at well four. The difference that time, we we outsourced it and that cost the the water fund almost 80 something thousand dollars. We've already started to do that work in-house. And there's no need for, the expense would just come out of the piping in the gate boxes. So we don't see any large expenditures. You know, we do have a fairly healthy reserve fund that anything that could pop up, you know, we could probably use that, you know, those funds for that.
I apologize. One more comment, if you will. I think, you know, we do have a large reserve fund. And should we be looking at diminishing that a little with respect to rates or not? And I don't know the answers to that, so I just throw it out there.
So I I believe that the the big thing with that and the way that the town meeting article was written for the borrowing of the DPW building, it was, and the treasure collector has, you know, reminded me several times, and she's correct, that the way the town meeting article was written was that we would, we have to borrow the money. And, you know, for that project, it was always the assumption that if we had, if you remember back, we thought the building was only going to cost 700 and some thousand for each of the free funds. We did, you know, so we do have that amount. But, you know, later, when the full bond is is put out to bid, you know, we can pay it off as much as we want. And that would be something that the board, you know, next year would look at. Should we use some of those funds instead of, you know, putting the, you know, the large expense on the rate payers for for this?
Thank you. In my opinion, too, that if you look at what we're doing, both water and sewer, it is what I call a spend down. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you could go and maintain no rate increase in the next year, the next year, the next year. But what it does is it pushes, it basically consolidates. Instead of having a really reasonable three and a half percent, you would have a, you know, 10 or 12% down the line. And you're, you know, getting down to a closer to your limit. And for sewer, it's even more pronounced in that, again, we're a lesser of a fund balance here. But again, we're just trying to maintain it. It's balancing the one or the other, you know, versus a quicker spend down or a higher rate increases later. And it's that sort of that adage, pay me now, pay me later. And we try to do both where it's it's balanced. But so in, you know, in my opinion, that's sort of a responsible use of your of your balance to behind, hiding behind those green arrows is that red is the capital cost. So you're going to be paying for that out of out of reserves directly and not incurring any borrowing costs, which is what it's intended for.
Okay. Is under help?
I don't think I have specific questions at this time.
All right, I have a question. And it's related to, you know, the revenue projection. And my question really is around increased customers, increased number of customers. And when I look at the revenue projection, I'm just looking at water for purposes of conversation. We added
Mr. Chairman, I have, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I was going to give that presentation. I have those numbers for you that maybe you could compare to your statement. If you'd like me to go now or wait, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I mean, I want to make sure that we're thinking about this in the right way. I mean, what the recommendation here is for FY '21 to maintain the rates at the current rate level. And we're not making any commitment to FY '22. But on the other hand, we are certainly looking at trying to maintain a reasonable level of growth if we have to. So but I just want to make sure I understand that in terms of these, these numbers here really are not taking into account customer growth of the customer base.
No. Actually, Jim, are you okay if I?
Yeah, I I think because we went on the conservative, way conservative side of that. So go ahead. And then I'll give him the numbers that that would, actual numbers.
That feels like a setup.
Yeah.
So I had a, this was actually a very collaborative update, you know, and I spent some time on the phone with Ms. Ginnell. You know, we looked at what the growth has been. And so, Mr. Chairman, my my goal, when I said that we don't we don't project revenue in the way that an actuary might, we look at the the usage, because everything's a trend. And for the number, so for the usage itself, again, I want to be conservative because when I say usage, think money. And if I think it's going up really, you know, fast and we maintain that, then you could be projecting money that's not going to come if it doesn't fulfill it. Same thing with the number of customers, but you guys have been going through a bit of a boom. So we added 34 accounts in '21, another 30 in '22, and another 30 in '23, and then just kind of held that. So that's 100 or so accounts over the next couple of years. And that might be a little conservative, but I, and we showed the usage going up one and a half a year. So that's why that's helping that that green line increase.
So there is a bit of a growth number here. I mean, the same principle applies to new growth on the property tax levy. Because as we increase households, we increase the property tax levy, not for everybody else, but for those new households.
Correct.
And bringing them on as water and sewer customers, then we increase the customer base, which theoretically is is going to be more dramatic in the sewer side than it is on the water side. I mean, so do we use the same projection for water and sewer in terms of number of new customers?
We did. It's actually a little bit higher for sewer. The buck in FY '21 was 90 and then 30, 30 after that. So it is a little bit more pronounced.
All right.
But, you know, the, yeah, if there's one thing, we can say unequivocally, more customers is more better because it spreads those costs over more people. And if you have the, you have the capacity, it's the number one best thing you can do for your system.
We have somebody else to build the infrastructure.
We did.
Yep, and we did.
If I give you a true estimate, these aren't estimates, these are actual. In FY '20, the sewer connection applications, we had a 116 tie-ins in in FY '20. So that's for sewer. And that brought in just on permitting fees of 204,850. So I think that's what the projection on on FY '21. And don't forget, most of these, most of them are Toll Brothers. But Acorn Place, there's 12 water and sewer permits that were tied in. And in sewer, you'll see that sewer was much higher than than water. We had eight new homeowners on Orchard Street that have already filed and paid their their fees to tie into the system. So that has, we haven't even started to reap. We'll see that in in this, you know, billing cycle. So 116 new sewer applications. The water is, you know, pretty close. We had 12 Acorn Place tie-in for water. And there was 101 tie-in fees for the water system. And the permitting fees for that was 244,420. And that's pretty substantial. And we don't see that slowing down at all. I mean, we just gave out, I think it was in the last few weeks to Toll Brothers, another 25 to 30. So that's going to meet that projection already for for FY '21. So I think that, you know, how did we get here? I think that just if I could, Mr. Chairman, and I'll close, was, you know, think back five years ago. You were on the board with Mrs. McGinnis and and Mr. Neville when myself and the town administrator came and, you know, you know, this town administrator came and proposed that we, you know, we use the sewer capacity for the Toll Brothers tie-in fee instead of them using their own private sewer system. And I think that this is reaping the benefits, you know, in a very, very short time. We projected that this would be maybe three or four more years out that we would start to reap these benefits. But with numbers like 116 and 110, I mean, most of them are theirs. But like I said, Orchard Street, I mean, nine people already, eight people have already, you know, tied into it. So I think that, you know, we're definitely going in the right direction. I don't see expenses, you know, there will be, you know, other expenses needed that will have to be paid. I, you know, Carol may want to, you know, chime in on what what is, you know, already there for that needs to be certified by the DOR. I think that, I don't know if she has those numbers yet. But I think with, you know, those tie-in fees for both of them, you know, I think that we're probably going to be looking at another substantial for the reserve funds that will be added to the money that we already have in place.
Yeah, my my recollection, or a couple of years ago, anyway, is that these out-year projection rate increases were much higher.
Right.
The out-years, they were much higher. Not that four, four plus four plus four plus four is good news, but the rates were, they were double-digit rate increases.
So I saw that firsthand. So that, I saw that firsthand, working, um, with, uh, the treasurer to, uh, Jen, to look at those numbers, and as you bumped up the, the numbers that they were going up, you could see the rate increases coming down, and that's, uh, it was substantial.
Yeah.
That's good planning on the town's part, you know, Jim's too, too modest to say it, but that's good utility management right there, is deciding to use your infrastructure rather than having them go private or on-site, so.
You know, that, in, in, in the dedicated work out of the Treasury Collector's Office and the DPW office, there's not a day that we don't discuss something to do with the water and sewer bill. Um, you know, we have the right people in the right place, um, you know, the readings are done. If there's a, a, something that is excessive in, in, in the water usage, once they find out about it, you know, we react, um, you know, so there's, there's a lot of work that goes into, um, there's not many estimated, well, there is estimated ones because of the COVID, um, you know, and the last two, and there'll probably be a bunch in this one. But, um, you know, that doesn't weigh, you know, uh, too happily on, uh, the, the, the water and sewer clerk, um, in, in, in the, in the Treasury Collector's Office. But, um, it, it, it's not just the planning, it, it is the dedicated work of the staff that, again, like I said, every single day, we, we discuss something, somebody's water bill, somebody's sewer bill. And we'll talk about stormwater just briefly in two seconds, but...
All right. Any other questions from the board members? Now, I'd ask, uh, if there's members of the public who would like to comment on the presentation or, uh, the information that was shared, I welcome them here. And if you can see, if there's any wants to comment...
Hold on. I'm going to stop by screen sharing, I think that will help. Hold on. How do I do that?
We'll post this on the web.
There we go. There we go. Yep, nope, you're good.
Well, not having comments does not equal good.
Not good.
I want to make sure that there's opportunity.
I can see if anyone is, if no one has waved their hand.
Okay, well, at this point, I'm hearing no other comments, um, which then means that we have, um, the opportunity, uh, to hear from the, our consultant, the DPW director, questions from the board. And so I would ask that a member of the board make a motion that we close the hearing so that we can take action with respect to water and sewer rates for FY21.
Move that we close the hearing?
Second.
Second.
Seconded that the board, uh, acting as water and sewer commissioners, close the hearing on, uh, rate-setting proposals for fiscal year 21. I will poll the board. Uh, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried, and the hearing is closed. So now we move to taking action with respect to the evidence that was presented to us at the hearing. Um, the recommendation that we heard was that we maintain the existing water and sewer rates for FY21 with no increase. So I would ask for a motion to that effect, and then if there's discussion, we can have that after the, uh, motions on the table.
I move that we maintain sewer, water and sewer rates for fiscal year 21 as they presently exist.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the FY21 water and sewer rates at the same level that were in effect for FY20 with no increase. Discussion of that motion. All right, therefore there, I would then call for a vote of the board on the setting of the water and sewer rates for FY21. All those in favor, I'm sorry, there you go. I'll get over it. By the time we get back together, we'll, in live, I'll be calling for roll calls. So I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, and the rates are established for FY21. I want to thank our consultant for the presentation. I think it was thorough and informative. I think it was also helpful for the public to be able to see it, uh, via the Zoom, and thanks to Mr. McKay, uh, for, and all the staff are working hard to make a, uh, comprehensive and thoroughly analyzed proposal for the board to adopt. So, Mr. McKay, was there another thing you wanted to add as part of, uh, discussion on general and water and sewer?
No, not, not on water and sewer. It would just be on the, uh, stormwater. I mean, there's no vote needed. That was, it's in its third year, um, and that will remain the same at the rates that were already posted in the three-year cycle.
Right. We had, we had, uh, adopted a three-year rate. I, I guess it's a three-year rate, was it actually a three-year rate or our goal? Do we really need to take vote, or?
No, I think that, uh, it, it, it was, it was a goal, and you're correct, it was a goal, and I think that, uh, Mr. Gazinski, I, I...
I think we are maintaining the rates.
Right.
There's no...
Yeah, we'll move on. I agree.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I agree, there's no vote needed, Mr. Chairman, on the stormwater. Uh, if, um, the board is fine keeping the rates as is, as recommended.
Okay. Uh, all right, the next item on our agenda is item twenty-dash-one-sixty-eight. Mr. Clacco is on, but he has, uh, made a request with respect to the DPW building permit. Maybe he's not on.
Wayne? Oh, there he comes.
He's on?
He was. There he is. I see, I see his name, but I, he's not, oh, there he is. Wayne, can you hear us? There he is. Hello, Mr. Clacco?
Apologies.
No worries.
I was muted while your other presentations were on. I am, uh, here, uh, asking for, um, relief for the DPW construction project, which is, uh, hopefully going to begin, um, in a couple of months. Um, that the town waived the building inspection fee, or the building permit fee, I should say, uh, which is comprised of, of two components. One is, uh, the actual permit fee based on the, the size of the project, and then secondly is the, uh, is the cost of the, uh, per, uh, inspection, uh, that the, uh, electrical and plumbing inspectors, uh, earn every time they come out to, to make an inspection. And in all of the previous projects in the last twenty-five years on municipal projects, we have in fact agreed to waive the, the permit fee, but not the inspection fee. And the reason why we've done that is because, uh, uh, the permit fee, uh, would be charged by the, uh, general contractor and included in their cost. And so we were paying for it in their fee, they're marking it up, and then turning around and charging us for it. So, um, in my view, it's a, a prudent thing to do to, um, simply waive the permit fee, um, but not the, uh, inspection fees. So I ask the board to consider that for this DPW project. The, uh, cost of that, uh, project that's currently out to bid is a little over three million dollars, so it's a substantial charge to the project. I would ask you to consider waiving that.
Thank you, Mr. Clacco. Um, and I agree, we have done this with all the other, uh, municipal and school buildings. Not only is it, uh, my view, don't want to pay a markup for somebody that charges this, but we're paying ourselves, so it's kind of a...
Correct.
Uh, unnecessary. Questions from my colleagues on the board? Or a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Jim Pietro.
Uh, building permit fees are based, just so you know, they're based on the cost of construction, it's twenty dollars per thousand. Um, typically in the past, um, it should be noted to anybody who does bid on the job that the permit fees, uh, building permit fees are waived, so that they don't call the building department, ask what the permit fee is, and then put it in their bid proposal. So if you get two bid proposals and they both figure it in, and then you don't, you know, they don't have to pay for it, they make that money. So, uh, I would, I would definitely, when you make a motion, to make sure that, you know, when it does go up for bid, that it's advertised and shown that the building permit fee is waived. Um, I believe Wayne, when discussions with Wayne, uh, the inspection fee for the plumbing, gas, and electrical is forty dollars per inspection. And the way that we did it with the school is, we estimated how many inspection it would, inspections it would take to complete that for the electrician and the plumber and the, and the gas, which is the same plumbing and gas. So we come up with an estimate on, on a cost, Wayne and I, as this, uh, moves forward, to see how much they can, how much they'll have to set aside to pay those individual inspectors. Just wanted to, uh, make sure that you were aware of that, that's how it went in the past. I know we have, uh, uh, some new people, so want to bring them up to speed as well, uh, on the whole process, that when we have a town project and how we handle all the permit fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion questions from the board? If I can take a motion from the board with respect to the waiver of the building permit fees?
I'll move that we waive the DPW building permit fees, and I take under advisement what Mr. Jim Pietro said, and make sure that the, when we ask for bids, that it's understood and written into the bids that the fees have been waived, so that they don't try to include those as part of their bidding process.
Second.
As a movement, seconded that the board approve the waiver of the building permit fees for the DPW building. I'll take a, I'll take a vote. Uh, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried, so, um, do we need to do anything with respect to the permits? I'm sorry, the inspection fees themselves, because those are fees paid to the inspectors. Those were, those are going to, the building is going to, uh, contractor wants to pay for those.
Uh, no, I don't think we do. Um, uh, the plumbing and the electrical, uh, subcontractors, those are filed sub-bids. Um, they will have to, uh, estimate, uh, the number of rough and final inspections, um, for each of their, uh, divisions of work, um, and they will include that in their price. Uh, um, so that will in fact be included. Uh, so I, I don't think there's anything for the select board to consider. I will say in regard to, uh, Mr. Jim Pietro's comment and Mr. Jermaine's, uh, advising comment, that, uh, the reason for this, uh, request tonight was so that we could put in a, the bidding amendment, uh, tomorrow, uh, the fact that the, uh, the permit fees, if you so agreed, uh, would in fact be waived for that very purpose, so that they would not be included.
Good, thank you. All right, so, uh, the fees are waived, the permit fees, and, uh, we look forward to hearing the outcome of the bids on the new building.
The, there is a walkthrough for contractors tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. If you'd like to come and join us, you're more than welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item number twenty-dash-one-sixty-nine. This is, uh, uh, an item carried over from a prior meeting. This is the proposal for water system and resiliency assess, I'm sorry, risk and resilience assessment. Again, this is a conversation from, uh, Mr. McCheck, you can lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I will turn it over to, uh, Betsy and Kirsten, um, just to update since where we were since the last meeting. Um, I think the board did, uh, receive a copy of the credentials of the, um, the firm that, you know, we had proposed to do the, um, uh, work, the assessment. Um, I, we did get a questionnaire from one of the selectmen, and I think in your packet, you know, we tried to answer, uh, Kirsten and myself tried to answer those questions. I think you have them. Um, I, I would just, before we get going, I would just, uh, someday, some, I'd like to come back at a different meeting and actually explain what actually the SCADA system is and, and who has the rights to operate it. And, uh, because it is a, it, it, to operate the system, you do need proper licenses under the DEP, Mass DEP, um, and, uh, that some of the, the cybersecurity testing will be going through the, um, you know, through the SCADA system. The licenses are all held by the DPW under the, uh, the director's position, holds all the licenses for the, um, SCADA system. Um, I, I just would, I hope the board is, is realizes that there's a, there's a timeframe associated with this. Um, when, when this was presented back in January to the board, to the finance committee, and then ultimately to the town meeting, the vote was given that we would move forward with what was proposed. And in that, we, we did have a cybersecurity, uh, it was spelled out in, in, in the handout in the brochure. Um, and there's speci- uh, specific specifications that, uh, the firm that will get it has to have, and there's not many firms out there that, that, um, can do a, an assessment, um, on, on the SCADA system in water, and I think Kirsten will talk about that, you know, um, soon. Uh, the timeframe, if we're looking to, you know, for, uh, funding at the November town meeting for, uh, to have the town have their cybersecurity aspect being done on it, um, I would ask that, um, that we, you know, in, in that picking of the, uh, the, the, the company that's actually going to do it, I would ask that the, uh, Water and Sewer Superintendent, um, he is the operator, uh, and he is the one that has the licenses that operates the system. Um, my title and my operation of it is the overseer of all of it, but I'd rather have the Water and Sewer Superintendent, uh, have input. Um, he's the one that operates the system every single day and along with the, the DPW Superintendent and the, uh, three or four other, I'll call people, but he can represent them and the DPW on the selection of the, uh, whatever cybersecurity firm gets picked. But I, I, you know, this has to be done by June thirtieth, and I'm kind of skeptical with waiting for a November town meeting vote for this to happen. Um, so, you know, we'll use the meeting minutes for this, that, you know, we'll use to, if it's not done on time, it'll be on the Board of Selectmen, Board, the Select Board, um, you know, a- a- and this vote. I've had a discussion with the town administrator, and I believe, Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion with you a- a- about this. I think that this should move forward as written, um, and that's just my opinion, but, um, so I don't know how you want to handle this further. I think that the, uh, contract was amended, you know, Betsy and Kirsten did amend the contract, um, so...
All right, so what we have, uh, in front of us tonight is a contract where, um, the cybersecurity component is carved. Uh, so I'd like to ask Kirsten and Betsy to address the board as to, um, what's contained in their proposal and what their, uh, point of view is with respect to the project overall.
Sure. Um, happy to talk about that. Um, so at the last meeting that we presented that contract at that time, this was for the water system risk and resiliency assessment, the required assessment by EPA looking at the level of NAX natural hazards and cybersecurity on the water system. So at, on the seventeenth, you saw a contract that had cybersecurity piece included, and some questions came up and were discussed at that meeting about, um, wanting to maybe look at cybersecurity throughout the whole town, and maybe, you know, it should be part of a, a larger issue or larger project, and, and maybe, um, the water system just be one part of it. So after having some discussions with, um, Mr. McKay and Mr. Gazinski, we drafted some responses to your questions, which we got some questions in writing. Um, and then we had a follow-up call with our proposed cybersecurity... And then we had a follow-up call with our proposed cybersecurity firm, and Mr. Jermaine, and Mr. Gazinski, and McKay, so that they could hear a little bit from that firm. As Jim McKay mentioned, you know, we looked at a number of different firms to make sure we were getting the right fit. So we found one that we liked, and we have a couple that we like. So we have no problem taking the cybersecurity piece out of our contract. In fact, that's what you now have in front of you. It's all the other pieces except the cybersecurity piece. We're comfortable. If you want to, you know, directly contract with a cybersecurity firm, we, you know, would like to see, as Mr. McKay mentioned, a firm that has specific experience in this field. We will just, you know, rely on that assessment incorporated into the broader risk and resiliency assessment that we need to complete as far as timeframe being done. The EPA deadline's end of June. So, you know, I think if we have the cybersecurity assessment results in this, you know, by early spring, that'll be, you know, we, we don't need a lot of time to incorporate it. We think we can work, you know, ahead of the cybersecurity assessment and then bring it into the final product. So that's the major change into the contract that you see right now, is really just taking the cybersecurity piece out. So that represented about fifteen thousand dollars of our proposed fee. So this contract, the contract, so our fee in the original contract was total forty thousand with twenty-five thousand Kleinfelders time, fifteen thousand the cybersecurity time. So what we have is taken that out. And then another question that came up at the last meeting was about fees and other work we've done on the water system, and, you know. One thing, this is all new assessment. This is not something we've done before. But, you know, we have some baseline data on your system that we have, you know, in our, already in our files. So, you know, just as a good faith effort, and to address some of that concern, we took two thousand dollars off our fee. So the contract you now have is twenty-three thousand. Those were the primary questions that arose.
Right. Kirsten, if I could just add, just briefly, one of the things.
One second. You talked about, Kirsten, Kirsten, three elements of this review. Could you just state them again?
Of the questions that came up?
No, we, the, the RA itself has three elements to it. Resiliency assessment has elements.
Yeah, there's, it looks at threats to the water system from malevolent acts.
From bad people.
Correct. Natural hazards.
Yep.
And then the cybersecurity is also part of that.
Right? So hurricanes, whatever.
Yeah.
And then it has cybersecurity. So we have to file a report with the EPA, we, the water system, addresses those three components. Right? By June thirtieth.
Yeah.
So what we have in front of us right now is a revised proposal to address items one and two. An item needs to be done. But it doesn't need to be done as part of this contract.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Can you say that one more time?
Item three, which is cybersecurity, doesn't need to be done with this contract. But do you work on the new?
Our, the, it needs to all be packaged together into a single risk and resiliency assessment.
Yeah, but you didn't actually bid on the risk and resiliency assessment report yet. My recollection is you took us up to a point, and then we still had to do something else. Is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, there is another component. That's the emergency response plan update. That's another required submittal. That is due by the end of December, the following, that's due six months later than the RRA.
Thank you, because that's my confusion, because I was, I had mine twelve thirty-one.
Right, that's for the, the emergency response plan gets updated based on the results of the risk and resiliency assessment within six months of completing the risk and resiliency assessment.
I understand, okay. So what was on, the revised contract proposal is items one and two.
Right.
Threats from malevolence, and then it's like the witch, maleficence. And then we have natural problem, disasters, whatever. I haven't a cybersecurity yet. Reviewer proposal. That we would have to get done by somebody else if we decide not to go ahead and use what was your original proposal last time. Is that right?
Yes, yes, you would need to find a consultant to prepare the, those components, the cyber secu, cybersecurity components of the risk and resiliency assessment. But then we would take those results and incorporate them into the overall document.
Thank you. Now I understand. I'm sorry, Betsy, go ahead.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I just wanted to, to mention that, that our concern with respect to our obligation to ensure your meeting your requirement under the EPA's obligation is that we, we would want to be involved at some point in reviewing the scope of work for the contractor that, that you did select, if you, if you choose to go through a, a separate selection, to ensure that the components that are required under a report that we're going to be presenting, or, you know, for, on your behalf, is inclusive of that, and at, you know, in a timeframe, so that the execution of their work and whatever additional tasks they may have in that broader cybersecurity evaluation could be done in a timely way. So that, that was our, our ask of, of the town if you were, if you choose to go through a separate solicitation for that cybersecurity contract.
Okay. Thank you. I, I understand. Alright, I have other questions then from the board members with respect to this revised proposal?
I don't, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any particular questions. I happen to think that the presentation of discussion we had the other day was very helpful. We are looking at some of the firms, whether they're going to be capable of dealing with the aspects of the risk and resiliency assessment for water system is a different issue, and one we'll have to look at, but I have no problem, and in fact, forward one way or the other, to having whoever ends up doing this working with you to make sure that there is consistency throughout, and that nothing's done where the people are unaware of what the issues are or concerns. And to that end, as we discussed, I'm hopeful to get, I think we have it, the details of your proposal for the cybersecurity, and so that we can compare all of them. We're trying to look at a few other firms right now, but of course, we're doing that in the context of the entire town, where this is just one aspect of what's being done. That doesn't mean that it won't eventually go to you, but the object right now is to understand all of it for the town. So thank you very much for the assistance the other day.
You're welcome.
Ms. Underhill, you have questions?
I actually don't. I enjoyed your questions and also wanted to hear what Pete had to say, so I'm good.
Okay, I guess that with respect to, you know, the comments on the cybersecurity, the comprehensive cybersecurity review, or what we're going to call it, to just be sure that I can feel comfortable at this point, and maybe it's from Mr. Gazinski, or maybe it's from Mr. Jermaine as the IT director, there's a concern been raised about the timing, in terms of getting this component of the cybersecurity done in time so that it can meet the June thirtieth deadline. And the question is, if this can't even begin until November, are we making, are we making it too much risk that we won't be able to get the job done?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know in the, the meeting we had the other day, which Kirsten touched upon, we did have a very positive discussion about the different approaches, and I think, obviously, there's risk, some risk no matter what direction we go in, but we feel there's enough flexibility in the process that even if we were to go, you know, with a different vendor for the, for the water component, and we went with another vendor and hired them, or the same vendor perhaps, as part of a broader project, and hired them in late November, that that would still provide ample time to provide the water portion of the report by the, by sometime in March, even if their final townwide report wasn't available till some, you know, later time. So that was my take on it, and certainly, perhaps Sleckman, Jermaine has other thoughts on it, but that was, that was my take from the meeting, that the timeframe would be sufficient, and that, you know, the town had enough options to move forward, that we would be able to meet those deadlines while still having the benefit of a broader townwide cybersecurity analysis done by, by a company from a whole town perspective.
That is also my understanding, and I'm going to emphasize that Kirsten in particular was very helpful in willing to work with us in that regard. We understand the constraint on time and everything else, and we are working to try to get this resolved as quickly as possible. If we see a problem there, we're going to have to make a decision to make sure we meet the deadline, and that may involve, will most certainly involve you and your company. But we just need to get through this process, which is going to take another, let's say, about another month. And that's what we're trying to work toward at this stage. So thank you very much for what you did the other day. It was very helpful.
Hey, you're welcome. Yeah, I, I think the timeframes should work out. It's not, it's not a huge project. As long as the, whoever the selected cybersecurity firm, I think it's clear, made clear that they should prioritize the water system review as their first task. I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely, and we fully understand that. So regardless of how we proceed, we're going to have to make some decisions in that regard.
Okay, so I guess we're at the point now where we need to consider a motion with respect to the revised RRA assessment project with Kleinfelder. I have a motion.
Sure. I move that we approve the revised proposal for the water system risk and resilience assessment with Kleinfelder.
In the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars?
Yes, in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars.
Second. So it's a movement and seconded that the board approve the contract with Kleinfelder in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars with respect to a water system risk and resilience assessment. I'll hold the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, so we'll go ahead and execute that. I think that contract can be executed by the town administrator, right?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman.
That's what we're asking for, yes.
We, you don't need the board to execute the contract.
No, it would be the town administrator.
Alright, next item on the agenda is the asset management fee proposal.
So just quickly on that, we've already finished phase two. We just submitted the paperwork for the final reimbursement of phase two. We just did that today. So we should be getting those funds back. And, and right now, we've been trained on the work order system. We're actually, hopefully, you know, the, the, the town system can handle it. We've been being trained on it daily. The work order system will be out in the, in the trucks. So as a work order comes in, we'll be able to dispatch it through the work, and they'll be able to open and close them hopefully within the next, say, month or so. So as part of phase three, most of that work in phase two was done for the water, and Betsy had come to us with the phase three, and unfortunately, it's, it's one of those that we, you know, learned that it's due by, I think, the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
End of this week.
And so Betsy can briefly explain what phase three is. We're not asking for any monetary amount of money for this. This is just the right to, to actually put the application in for, for the grant. And with already having one and two, and actually the one even before that, I think we have a good chance of, of getting it. But Betsy, go ahead.
Yeah, so real quickly, as Jim just mentioned, we just wrapped up the very first phase of this, and we had just kicked off last week with some of Jim's operations staff, the work related to the grant that you currently have obtained for, for the FY twenty-one. What, what we're talking about tonight is just a request that the board approve the submittal of an application. This is on the same SRF timeline. I, you're probably more familiar with that framework. But this is essentially a placeholder. The applications are due August twenty-first. It goes into that competition to determine whether or not you are actually awarded the grant. If that, if you are awarded, it's announced during the intended use plan that comes out typically in January. So January twenty-twenty-one would be when you determine whether or not the town actually was awarded the grant. If you were awarded the grant, you still are not obligated to actually accept the grant, you, as you would with an SRF grant. You are alone, you would determine, if the town wants to, you would go forward with an appropriation, saying that, yes, you do want to accept that grant, you are going to go forward with the project. And that wouldn't have to happen until spring town meeting. So we're not asking for any appropriation or any commitment for a dollar value at this point. We're just basically taking a place in line and, and hoping that by next year, you'll have an option of choosing to go forward with the next phase of this. The scope of work, I think, has been presented to the, to the board, and it would be a continuation of the work that we're doing with Jim and his staff right now in terms of his water sewer and stormwater infrastructure. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. As I mentioned, I think you all, all also did receive a, what was called attachment fee, which is a form saying that you support the, the effort. This is one of the, the new forms that they've asked for this year that indicates that they want to see a commitment from the town, that you're going to use this tool and the software and, and the effort that the dollars that are going in from the state, they want to see it used appropriately. So that's what that commitment letter is about. And the, the request this evening is simply that you, you vote to support the submittal of the application.
Mr. Chairman?
The form that you filled out the last time, I think you all filled one out before.
Mr. Chairman, you're, you're muted. Jim, you're muted.
Jim, you're muted.
That was a good thing, wasn't it?
Maybe.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask. Just a comment. I need to understand something. I believe that DPW folks have been working on this asset management a bit over the last few weeks. What we've also noticed is it's having a major impact on our servers right now. I don't know if this is temporary, or if this is something we're going to have to deal with in the long term. The reason I bring it up is, if it looks like this is the level of work that you're going to have to continue to do for some time, and that's fine, then we need to purchase yet another server and bring it online to load balance. Because right now, what's happening is you're eating up a substantial amount of our processing power, which, hey, that's what it is. It's just, we didn't know that going in, and it's caught us a little flat-footed. So if you can get me some information on that, or let me know if this is what we're going to see for the long term, then I can, perhaps working with you or your techs or whatever, we can determine what we should do in terms of. or whatever, we can determine what we should do in terms of either purchasing servers or what. When I say that, these are all out in the cloud, but that's beside the point.
So, Betsy, I, I can quickly answer that, I, the training's done, we, we finished that, and actually, at one time, we did have, you know, the iPads were on, we had three iPads on, and two computer systems, and as we found, as we dropped off, and I went on my own, you know, the, the water computer system, I think that alleviated some of the problem. The vendor that's actually, City Works, that he, he can't figure out why this is happening, he knows the iPads will have nothing to do with it because they'll be out in, in the field, he just sees it as being an app, and I actually, Pete, I did give him your, your info, that, that he will be reaching LTO probably this week, sometime this week.
Thank you. Just so you're aware, it looked like, however you were working with PDFs, and that's fine, I mean, it's just, those, I have never seen PDFs take up that much system resource before, so whatever they're doing is very high intensity, so it'll be important to talk with whomever you want, because we need, I don't want to be slowing you down, nor do I want to be slowing the rest of the, the MD, the town down, so we just need to understand if this is a long-term, or if it's just a short-term while we're going through the training, and otherwise, it will be much lesser load in the long term. And I can't answer that, I just have no idea how your systems operate.
So, he, he will get in touch with you.
Yeah, and I'll also make sure Andrew's aware of it, Jim, and I'll make sure. Okay, very good.
I really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Sure.
Jim, you're muted again. He's still muted.
Oh, my goodness. What can I say?
You weren't saying much.
I want to know about, a little bit about the, the output. The reason this question, of course, is this is a subject that's come up occasionally at the capital planning committee, which is, you know, creating its own database for, you know, asset management, really, it's really more expenditure planning. And this is, you know, there's a, this is dovetailing, as far as I'm concerned, and it's to have sample output, or what, what this is going to do for us, so that we can share it with the other interested parties, whether it's the finance committee, or the capital planning committee, or the rest of the board, because this is something that came up in the DPW study, it's come up, you know, from capital planning, and, you know, I have this vision that it's, you know, even though it's going to take up a lot of cyberspace, it's going to really do a lot of things for us. So, at what point does it make sense to start sharing a little bit more broadly some of the outputs of the asset management tool, I guess, itself?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that Jim's got some thoughts himself on, on what, what that's going to look like, but we, we definitely, right now, the product is, is also in this process that Jim's talking about with respect to your operations staff, and their use of the, the collection data tools, because this is a big part of what's going to ultimately result in the value to your capital planning. So, what we're doing over this, particularly this year, working hard, looking at issues in your water system, so things like updating your hydraulic model, and looking at your condition of your, of your water system, allows us to start identifying potential capital projects. Certainly, it, it relates a lot to the conversation I, I heard in the presentation earlier at your rate hearing, in terms of how you determine what projects you have online, and what sort of, as he mentioned, you know, the proactive maintenance, a lot of this has to do with not just the capital planning, but, you know, what, what can you do to extend the life cycle of, of all of your assets. So, we can share that, those products now, in terms of what, what this process looks like, what the planning tools look like, how the data collection tools are used by folks in the field, and how iterative this process is, so for every year that the town continues to invest, the better that data becomes, and the better the data, the better your investment choices, in terms of proactive maintenance and, and things of that nature. So, you know, anytime, Mr. McCaffrey, that you're interested in a presentation, we've had certain workshops with, with folks in town, I know that that's a part of, of our current scope as well, so we're more than happy to, to present both what the, what the process and what the products look like with respect to the outcome.
Good, thank you, I'll, we'll follow up with that, because I think there's some opportunity here for, you know, broader, more broad distribution of this output. All right, so at this point, we're, what you're asking us for is really just the vote to support the application for the asset management Phase Three grant process, is that right?
Correct.
So, I would make a motion that the board indicates its support for the water sewer, stormwater system, asset management Phase Three grant proposal, assisted by our great friends from Kleinfelder. I can leave that last part out.
I kind of, I kind of like it.
I'm putting it in. Betsy, you and Kirsten have been here enough, you deserve that, I think.
Is it, no, there's no second, I guess we're not? Okay. So, it's a motion and seconded, I will call the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried, so thank you very much for attending the meeting this evening, very informative, and we look forward to continuing to work with you folks on this grant, and the, and winning the grant, and getting the projects going.
Mr. Chairman, we, we do need those forms, if somebody could, if everyone can fill them out and send them back to me, that's included the town administrator, the finance director, I've already got the treasurer collector's letter, I think that's part of the packet, if yous could fill them out and please send them back.
It is, and we, it will, it will certainly help the, the overall likelihood that the grant would be awarded, if we, if we have all of you filling those out and showing them.
Thank you. And you need that by?
Well, as soon as possible, because the plant, the, the proposal has to go in on the 21st.
They've already got it written up.
Yeah, so, so if we could get those by Wednesday, that would be great.
Is there a doc you sign opportunity here?
I don't think we've set it up like that.
Okay, well, we'll figure it out.
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you all very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
All right, the next item we have is appointment of a temporary building department assistant one. Mr. Jim Petro and Mr. Kuzinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I did ask Mr. Jim Petro to join us this evening, just to talk a little bit as part of this, just about the, the volume of work that's going through his office, which is substantial, and the need for some temporary assistance to help him get through this period of time, and I think the building commissioner can, he's on the line to talk a little bit about that volume of work, as well as the individual that we'd like the board to ratify the appointment of this evening.
Thank you, Mike, Mr. Chairman, we've had, it's in our budget for the billing department for this line item, it's an eight-hour position, it was filled last fiscal year by Jen Kiggin from the Board of Health in her spare time to help out in the billing department. Jen did not want to continue that this fiscal year, so we had conversations with Mike, and we posted the position within the town hall, and we had a couple of applicants, one of which Steve Bianco, who has been with us for five years at the billing department for the tax write-off, he's retired, he knows the billing department inside and out, the filing system, and the whole intricate part of the operations there, so Steve expressed interest in a part-time position, and we felt as though that it would, he would be a great fit, he's very flexible, we need someone there, as you can imagine, every morning is when construction starts and gets off the ground, usually around seven o'clock it starts, and hopefully subsides around one o'clock, so Steve can come in for a couple hours every day and help out Liz with the volume of, of work, and putting in data into the unit system, which we're way behind, as you can imagine with all the, the stuff we got going on there. So, we did interview both candidates, Mike and I did, and we felt as though that Steve would be a great fit, he's, he's excited about the little part-time job, and we'd like to pose him to be a temporary department assistant one, which is eight hours till we can get squared away with other issues.
Jim, you're muted again.
Mr. McCaffrey? Still muted.
You'll be reading lips. Having a great time in this house.
Get the phone, get the phone.
Do you want to make this appointment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm requesting that the board approve my appointment of the temporary building department assistant one, at eight hours per week, of Steve Bianchi. I'll move that the board approve, recommend approval of the town administrator's recommendation for Steve Bianchi to be a department assistant one, temporary building department assistant one, reporting to Mr. Jim Petro.
Second.
So, motion and seconded that the board approve the town administrator's appointment as a temporary building department assistant one of Mr. Stephen Bianchi, I'll call the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda happens to be application from Mr. Jim Petro.
Yes.
Acting in his own behalf.
Well, me and my wife.
But not as a court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we're interested in a piece of property on Orchard Street, the property has been advertised for sale by owner for several months, I looked into it, since my wife and I are considering moving from where we've been for the past 57 years anyway for me, to a new location, so the lot meets all zoning requirements for that zoning district. The addition of town sewer on Orchard Street now allows that building lot to be able to be built. Problem was, the original design way back when, and in 2007, the current owner attempted to get a septic system there, but was denied by the Board of Health because of the, the neighbor's well was too close to the septic system. I went to land court, and then they did have a conclusion, and it's been, they filed a abatement back in 2007 as an unbuildable lot. So, when I looked into it, I contacted Jim, since they were just putting the binder coat down, have to come to the board of selectmen and ask permission to, to, to cut the binder coat, get the water and sewer to the lot, so we can move forward with it, and, and in conversations with Jim, he requested that we put flowable fill in, in the excavation site, which I'll be more than happy to do, I also have a, an application here for 6,700, 65 bucks for water and sewer, so we can get that, works, gets approved, the, the, the purchase and sales agreement is contingent upon, obviously, this lot having water and sewer. So, I do come to the board personally, my wife and I, purchasing this, trying to purchase this lot, and, and ask permission from the board to cut the road to bind the coat, so we can bring water and sewer and service the lot. The assessors' records show that since 2007, it's been assessed for 8,400 bucks, so we can write off, get that assessment up once we get water and sewer to that lot, and we can start the building permit application process. So, therefore, I, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, any questions?
I have a question, because despite my best efforts, on the contrary, couldn't find it.
Couldn't find what?
Where is Lot 22, map six?
It is, it, the planning board has issued a, a number 121 Orchard Street, so it's directly across the street, on the corner of Bullard Lane and Orchard Street, there's a big yellow old farmhouse there on the right, and directly across the street there, from there, is a vacant lot, which where you'll see a drainage ditch that is part of that lot, that comes from the upper part of Walnut Street, and comes, and empties down into Bogusso.
That was my guess, but I just wanted to confirm it. When I drove by, that, that's got to be it, because, yeah, it's across from Dewey Farm, and it's been for at least 50 years since I've been here, well, no, 40, anyway, and it was many, many years before that. Okay, so now I know where it is, and so, but there's no water and sewer stub there, that went right property.
Right, but, and that's because the assessor had it, I believe the assessor had it down as unbuildable, which technically it was unbuildable, because they couldn't get a septic system there, and, and now that the sewer's there, it's buildable, so you can, you don't have to have the septic system, obviously.
All right, some questions from the board members? I know I'm not on mute now.
No, you're not.
I'm all for it, so. Do you want to make a motion?
Well, I have to say that after having, what, a whole week of driving down Orchard Street with no hole in it?
Patch it up. We need a speed bump. No speed bump, it'll be smooth just like it is.
All right, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before, as part of the motion, I would ask that you would please put in there that, that they do use flowable fill for both the water and sewer trenches, the reason for the, the stubs that were not put there is because it wa, it is listed as an unbuildable lot, that's the reason why, and this is the time to do it, that's why we decided to leave a binder coat there for the, for this year, because the gas company will be coming in with many more gas trenches, but the sooner, the better that we get this done, so we can settle for, you know, they are coming back in the spring to put the top coat back on that, and that will, holds that road up for at least five years.
Right, so, I mean, it's, it is timely request here, at least the planning has happened. So, do I have a motion from another, from the board?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sure. I move that, hold on, I'll get there. I move that we grant approval for Mr. Jim Petro to do the work necessary to, to get stubs for water and sewer, provided that the work is done to fill, backfill it with flowable fill and reinstall the binder.
For map of six, lot 22.
Thank you.
Second. Provided that you get permission from the building inspector.
Jim, does he have a chat?
It's been moved and seconded to grant the water sewer extension request on Lot 22 on Orchard Street, I'll call the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Questions carried unanimously, or we can work together with the DPW to get that, uh, taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is, um, initial review of the gateway at Milis. This is a preliminary conversation relative to a project that's being proposed for a, uh, proposed LIP forty-B project on Main Street. Um, Mr. Merrick, are you with us this evening?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, okay, we have, the board members have, uh, received a packet. Uh, if you'd like to talk with us a little bit about it, um, that would be helpful.
Sure. Uh, Karen, would you like me?
For as an initial conversation, you're not looking for us to approve anything or to move forward.
Well, we talk about, I guess we'll talk about the next steps when we get some feedback from, from the board, but, you know, as a, a local initiative program process, uh, for the applicant to kind of move forward with the state, they would ultimately need the support of the select board to do that.
Right. Yep.
Um, Karen, would you like me to share my screen here?
Certainly.
All right.
I think I finally set it up, so it's easier to do that. Yeah, look at that.
All right.
It's only taken me four months of Zoom meetings, but we're getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Dan Merrick with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant with us tonight. We have Len Stapha, who's project architect. Dean Harrison was accordingly consultant. And the applicant, Phil Aramo. Um, this is a piece of property located, uh, on Route one-oh-nine, uh, on the Medfield side. As you're coming in, um, from the Medfield side, this is, this, this road right here is Dwight Street, and then this is one-oh-nine, and then this road over here is Larch Road. So this is, this is three existing lots that occupies the entire corner of that intersection, about two-point-one acres of land. And there's one existing house on the property presently. Mr. Aramo did meet with, pre-pandemic, of course, did meet with, um, Mr. McKay and some other town officials. I was not involved at that time, so I, I don't have the details of that meeting. But it was presented to them, uh, that this could be a possibility as a, uh, a LIP project, which is a, a forty-B affordable housing development that, uh, basically has the support of the town, as opposed to a non-LIP forty-B, which is where an applicant just simply files with the state and proceeds through the process, um, in that fashion. What the applicant is proposing is three buildings. They would each have, uh, sixteen units, so there would be a total of forty-eight units here. Twenty-five percent of those would be affordable, so twelve of the units would be affordable. However, because this is a rental project, the town would get credit for the entire forty-eight units on your affordable housing rules, which I think is a, a significant advantage for this kind of a project. Uh, it's a mix of primarily one and two-bedroom units. There are eighteen one-bedroom units in total, twenty-four two-bedroom units in total, and six three-bedroom units. We have seventy-seven parking spaces proposed. We, the, the version of the site plan that was, was shown to the town officials earlier on had the three buildings more kind of closely crowded towards the street's frontages. We thought it would be better to kind of break it up and move two of the buildings to the back so that we could do a lot of landscaping along the street frontages here and, uh, and really just kind of break up the whole visual, uh, appearance of the development. There's not a lot around here, I think you know. Um, everything to the east of us is owned by Truster Brothers. The land immediately to the south of us is owned by Truster Brothers. There are a couple of single-family homes in this vicinity, but in the grand scheme of things, this is, uh, a nice location for, uh, a development of this nature. Uh, I, I, I think I, I've mentioned this to you in the discussions about another perspective with project in town, also Oliver, I'm on it, but, you know, there are two ways to kind of try to manage your, your forty-B obligations, which is a mandate from the state, as you know. Uh, I work in two towns that, that are handling them in vastly different ways. In one town, they really have not done much of anything and they got, they got hit with a three-hundred-plus-unit forty-B about fifteen years ago, and they're in the midst of, of getting a second one because they haven't made any gains towards it. Another town that I work in a lot is in Medfield, and they're doing, uh, a marvelous job of managing their forty-B obligation. And they, they have gone out over the past several years and actively solicited local developers to do small, comprehensive permit LIP projects in appropriate locations. And they put themselves in a, in a situation where they have been able to maintain safe harbor under the regulations and, and therefore been able to preclude a large forty-B from coming in town. So my thought here for the town of Milis is this might be a good opportunity for the town to kind of work with an applicant who is willing to do a, a small modest project, and it will help the town towards advancing towards its, its affordable housing requirements. And it will also allow the select board the opportunity to be kind of integrally involved in, in the process here, um, as opposed to a more traditional forty-B where it basically goes to the state and then directly to the zoning board. So, um, that's a, an overview. We did submit to you a preliminary site plan, which we prepared, which just outlines the location of the buildings, the setbacks, the parking areas, you know, a rough take at landscaping, a rough take at grading and utilities. There are three existing sewer stubs into the property, one for each of the three existing lots. So there is sewer available to the site, and there is obviously municipal water available to the site. We also submitted architectural, uh, concept plans to you, prepared by Len Stapha. Uh, this overview, just some, we did some three-D renderings of what this looks like. This, these buildings are modeled after a building that was constructed in Medfield, uh, on Route twenty-seven, down near the intersection of West Street. Um, it's adjacent, it's immediately adjacent to the Garbs School, if you're familiar with that. It's a building that was just recently constructed, um, in the last year or two. Um, and this has a very kind of similar feel, and it, it has a feel of a two-story structure. And then in the attic space, there's four one-bedroom apartments kind of built into the U space and, and, uh, gable space, but it's, it's designed to basically look and feel like a two-story structure. So, um, we, we, we also provided some floor layouts. You could see that the first two floors have four two-bedroom units, one one-bedroom unit and a three-bedroom unit. The reason for the mix, I believe, and Dean could probably speak to this better than I, but I, I believe the state requires a fairly broad distribution of bedroom, uh, unit styles in the project. Uh, you have to have some amount of, I believe you have to have some amount of three-bedroom units, but it's not a, a, a large requirement. And in the attic space, you can see we have these four one-bedroom units, um, that are tucked in there, and then either end of the building is basically just blue space. So with that, um, we are here to request, to seek and see whether you are interested in supporting the project as a LIP. Um, in order for that to advance, um, the board would have to go to support the project and then the applicant's consultant, Dean, would, uh, prepare an application form that the town would actually co-sign, um, as part of that process. So the applicant at this point is prepared to move forward, um, with the state. We have our preliminary site plans, we have our preliminary architectural plans in order, and the applicant is ready to kind of advance this project at this point. So we'd like to, uh, answer any questions that you might have and, uh, see what you think.
Uh, okay, this is, uh, I'll ask a question, then I'll, uh, uh, allow my colleagues to weigh in. Um, there's three existing buildings on the, on the property, so I assume they go, right? I mean.
Everything would be demolished on the property. Yeah, there's one, there's one existing structure. You can kind of see the outline of it here. Uh, there's existing structure right here, and there are some outbuildings. But everything would be demolished on the property to make way for them to develop.
So there are people living there now?
Yeah.
Um, any thoughts, you know, as to whether or not they would be potential residents here? Or how, how does, what is the, what is the thinking in terms of that? Just they'd have to leave or they're gonna tear the buildings down, or how, how would that work?
Obviously, it's early in the process, but, uh, I think what the applicant would prefer to do is to be able to construct, you know, one of the rear buildings initially, uh, as phase one, and then give the people who reside in the existing structure an opportunity there to, to move into the new, the new apartments if they're inclined to do so.
Okay. Because when I went by the other day, you know, that, that was the question I had, my initial question, anyway, in terms of, uh, there's a lot here, I suppose, it's a pretty good-sized project. Um, I have a better sense now of what's actually gonna be pretty, to one-oh-nine. The other, I mean, how far back is that? The out, the two back buildings, how many feet from one-oh-nine?
Um, so that's going to be, uh, a hundred and fifty feet. If you give me a minute, I can give you a more precise figure.
But there's no access from one-oh-nine. You have to go on either Dwight or Larch to get under the property?
It's an open, uh, it's an open conversation, but yes, we are, our initial concept is no access offer Route one-oh-nine. We think from a traffic management standpoint, that's going to be better. Um, we, we have the two roads adjacent to us that we can access, um, and, you know, we're, we're investigating the option of maybe just one-way travel through the parking area, so you would enter on one road and address on a second road. Uh, but those are things that could all be, um, refined as we move forward with a more, uh, definitive site plan design. Those are the kinds of things that kind of tend to get hammered out, uh, in front of the zoning board. But, yeah, we are at this point, as you can see from this plan, we're basically anticipating a curb cut on Larch Road and then a curb cut on Dwight Street and then nothing on Route one-oh-nine.
Okay.
And the answer to your prior question, Mr. Chairman, is from the pavement on Route one-oh-nine, the, uh, rear buildings are about a hundred and fifty feet back.
Okay. And they're three-story buildings, right?
Two and a half, I would kind of qualify them as. There's only the four, the four one-bedroom units in that third level.
Okay. Um, Mr. Jermaine, questions?
Not really. I like the idea, to be very truthful. My only concern at this point is what we're gonna do with respect to sewer, which is an issue we're gonna have to deal with this fall. But aside from that, I know where the property is. I've been, I've been by it enough. I can pretty well visualize it. I like the idea, and it makes a lot of sense to me.
Ms. Underhill?
Um, I think I do have a few questions. Um, the first question, and I don't know who can answer this, but, um, where do we currently stand with our forty-B obligations as a town?
Dean, do you have a, a good number on that? I looked it up today and it was somewhere just south of four percent, but that, that may not be a current figure.
Yes, that's, that's the most recent set of numbers, um, that's published by the state. Now, um, obviously, when the two-thousand and senses, two-thousand and twenty senses come out, um, that could go up or down depending on, um, your housing production that you've had over the last ten years.
Yeah, I mean, the number that I've been not working with, but assuming, is it's a four percent number, and the number hasn't changed much. Um, we have a number of projects that are under consideration or underway, but at the same time, we have, you know, Toll Brothers is building three-hundred-and-some-odd not-so-affordable housing units. So that's a big, that's a, and Acorn Street as well. I mean, we're running, we're not running fast enough on forty-B. I think that's part of our problem. We're running too fast on the other things, perhaps. Maybe that's the wrong terminology. We're running fast on the other type and not keeping up with forty-B. So I would be concerned that we're, we're falling behind.
Yeah, and I'd like to just add that, you know, one thing that Dan did mention is that, as you know, um, all the num, all the units count towards your ten percent if it's a rental project. So, um, you know, you do make progress with rental versus homeownership. Um, so, I mean, between this one and a few others, maybe you will make some progress and, um, with the housing production plan, you can, you know, control the number of developments coming into town.
Okay. And I'm just looking at, um, I just plugged in two-thirty-two Main Street on Google. So here I'm seeing a house, and then I think I see like a, some kind of a court or something. Um, are I, any of you familiar with that view? How far back is that going?
How far back is local?
So I can't, I don't know what the measurements are on here. Hundred fifty feet.
So the existing house is, the existing house structure is very close to the road. Um, it's maybe ten feet off of the street property line?
Oh, I see. Okay, yep, yep.
You can see here, this is the existing conditions plan. There's a driveway off of one-oh-nine that would go away, and then this is the existing multifamily structure here, and then there, there is a outbuilding and a, an old pool that was just filled in and a driveway that comes off of Larch Road.
Okay, I see.
A driveway that comes off of Dwight Street.
Okay. So the applicant owns the property then?
The applicant has acquired the property.
Okay, okay.
We, we split this into three lots many years ago on behalf of the prior owner, uh, the St. Sears, and they, they never moved forward with any development on them. The applicant has acquired the entire parcel here and, uh, is the current owner.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just ask again, Dan, can you just confirm? You said it was forty-eight, it's a forty-eight-unit residential project, and I missed, did you say that they, they're owned or rented and how many were affordable?
It's a total of forty-eight units.
Right.
It's a rental, it's a rental project.
It is rental, okay.
Twenty-five percent of the total unit count is affordable, so that's twelve units. But the town gets credit for all forty-eight units.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
And I'd just add, Dan mentioned that you had to have a number of three-bedroom units. Under the state requirement, ten percent of the units have to be, um, three-bedroom units. You have to round up. Can't round.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, um, if I may, uh, address the board, um, Robert Weiss, I'm the, uh, Director of Planning and Economic Development for the town. And I'm gonna ask this evening if the board withhold support for this project and, um, uh, I will speak as the, uh, the Planning Director, Economic Development Director. I can't speak to, uh, environmental or utilities or safety or, or architecture or anything of that nature. I do want to talk, uh, about the location of a, uh, essentially, really a, a very dense development where one really should not, uh, be built, whether it's low income or market. Uh, and the town is now considering, uh, a couple of dense low-income developments in its town center, which are being held up. We're, we're trying to manage this, but it's being held up, uh, by the zoning board, which is, uh, has decided not to meet and has no time, uh, no meetings planned. But these are high, uh, uh, higher density, uh, in a part of the town where it can absorb a higher density in the developments, such as this one. Um, and there's several reasons, uh, while, uh, that I would bring up, but I'm just gonna bring up, uh, of, of three of them, and I think basically what we're looking for is something that's gonna enhance, uh, the town's economy and enhance the town's, uh, livability. Now, it's not unusual, uh, for suburbs to have islands of unconnected Now, it's not unusual for suburbs to have islands of unconnected developments, such as this one is going to be, but it's, it's what makes suburbs unattractive to many. If you look at our most successful neighborhoods in this town, they are connected to one another. This is not going to be connected to another neighborhood. The proposed project's location is very remote from any kind of amenities that would support so many families. It is almost a mile and a half to the nearest convenience store, supermarket, or any other amenity that families find necessary. And, and it's a mile, actually, a mile point forward to Metfield as it is to Millicent Commons, so a lot of the business will go out of town. But this, basically, the reason I bring this up is because it means that a family is going to be burdened, and the low-income families especially, with the need for an automobile being absolutely necessary for their life. A location in the center of town would allow the tenants to simply walk to many of the stores that they would need a car for at this location. Secondly, the town doesn't have any form of public transportation now. It hasn't had it for almost a generation. It means we're going to be asking, again, low-income families to make a car absolutely mandatory. This location also put scores of unnecessary automobiles into this section of town. Again, a location towards the center, town center, would require fewer automobiles overall. And, and finally, the parcel that this project proposes to develop is in the town's RS zone, where it would allow, you know, three, four families, four single-family houses to be constructed. This has traditionally been an area of the town that is appropriate for single-family housing, and it remains so. Basically, what we're doing here is we're creating not a, not a neighborhood, not a livable place. And while I can't complain about, you know, the architecture or anything like that, it's basically, to me, it's a, it's a biosphere that's in, in a part of town where nothing else really, really is. It's bordered on two sites, two sides by a sand and gravel company, hardly a place you want to really bring up a kid. Towns have to be livable, and this is really not a livable project. I can't see how this development can help the tenants, the neighbors, the town in general, except perhaps, you know, it's going to be profitable. So it's just, it would not be an asset to the town. I think we have alternatives in terms of low-income developments that we can, that we're looking at right now. And I think the town should not be sought for, should not support this project.
Mr. Chairman, may I just address Mr. Weiss, if I may?
Jim, you're on mute. And your video is gone, so I don't know what that means.
I don't know why your video is gone, yeah, Jim, I noticed that too.
But I am no longer on mute.
Okay, I can hear you now.
But you're in the dark.
So, Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to clarify a little bit. Mr. Weiss kept mentioning low-income. This is not exactly low-income in the sense from a income standpoint. These are four working families. The maximum income for a family, depending on family size, is no more than 80% of area median income. Currently, Millicent is short, we all know that, but we're not talking just low-income families here in the sense of, you know, people earning 30 or 50% of area median income. For example, you know, a one-bedroom, based on the current income limits, would generate about $1,800 a month for a one-bedroom rent. A two-bedroom is roughly around $2,100, and a three-bedroom would be $2,500. Your income levels are high in this area. A one person right now, based on the 2020 income limits prepared by, you know, HUD, one person, the 80% median income is $67,400. A two-person is $77,000. A three-person is $86,650, and a four-person is $96,250. And may I understand Mr. Weiss's comment about public transportation? Yes, for very low-income or moderately low-income families, there is sometimes a need to be locally central to public transportation to get to work or to get to the downtown area. Being suburban, I agree that, you know, there's more reliance on vehicles, and we're trying to all get away from that, but still, when a town is at or below 10% of its affordable housing, it is the obligation of the towns to provide more housing as necessary. And being under 5%, there is definitely a need. And I do understand that there are other applications in front of the board, the zoning board of appeals. However, you know, right now, none of those get counted because none of them have the permit necessary to give the towns the, what they call is the safe harbor. So I do respect Mr. Weiss's opinions on some of his concerns about, you know, it's, it's kind of by itself, it's not really a residential neighborhood. However, it is a location that can support the housing. You have a need for the housing, and it's, it's not really serving the low-income population as it was mentioned by Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of thoughts, too, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. American.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with the concepts from Mr. Weiss, but, you know, from a practicality standpoint, the town of Millicent has no public transportation. So, you know, these are not people who don't work. They're, they're people who have lesser incomes than, than other families in town, but they still work. And if they're, if they don't have a job in downtown Millicent, they need a car wherever a development is. So while there could be a, a small reduction in the number of cars if this were situated downtown, I don't think it would be significant. And there's, there's not a lot of land available downtown. You know, this is two acres of land. You know, it's very hard to find that downtown and to, to make it affordable. Now, that's the other component of this is, you know, with the affordable percentage, you have to have an affordable development. It has to, the costs of building a development have to be manageable. If you look in Metfield, drive down the road, all of their affordable housing that they've done recently in the last few years under this, you know, new program that they're working on is all along Route 27. So if you go down to the center, hit the left, head toward Sherbin. Yet just outside the center, there's a new condo slash apartment project on the right. That's a 40B, right next to DPW Yard. There is the new building that I referred you to, next to the guard school at the intersection of West Street. That's a 40B. There is a project on West Street, which was 92 units, which we did. We permitted that maybe seven or eight years ago. That's a 40B, and we just got another one permitted at the old DFW, which is on West Street, right, right behind the vet clinic at the corner of West and 27. These kinds of locations are, are common for a development of this nature, and would it be more ideal to pop it downtown? Sure, but it's hard, it's very hard to do that because of lack of space. It would be, you know, it's hard to acquire the land necessary to do something like that. So I would just urge you to consider, you know, again, Metfield's a prime example. They're, all their affordable housing that's been approved and constructed in the last five years is not in the downtown area. Matter of fact, none of it's in the downtown area. We have the advantage of a sidewalk, although it is a 1.3 miles. We at least have a continuous sidewalk from this site all the way to the downtown, which none of the Metfield sites have.
The state made us do that. But the, the developments you're talking about in Metfield, though, I mean, they are starting to cluster around that area.
They're almost done.
Yeah, but they're, they created a cluster, I don't know whether it was intentional or what, but to the point, you know, where would, if this project went forward, where would the next similar project be in that area? I mean, we're not really creating a cluster here, we're creating an outpost.
Yeah, and some people would view the cluster as being problematic. The problem with, you know, Metfield's in a, in a different kind of situation than, than Millicent is. It's a great deal of single-family housing, very expensive single-family housing, so, you know, finding super locations for small projects that the town can support as a lift is, I think, more difficult, maybe, in Metfield. But you do, you know, honestly, they do end up, and when we did the, it's called the park in Metfield on West Street, it is just outside the intersection of 27 and West. That is on industrial land. And the town had a fit when we did that project because we were eating up valuable industrial land, even though the owner couldn't lease that property for 20 years. You know, it's, these are the kinds of areas where you find these kinds of developments being situated because, quite honestly, nobody wants to put them in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. And as I said, trying to find space in a downtown area, why maybe that's more ideal, is very difficult to do. So they look for these locations, these kind of little pockets in areas where, you know, it's in a transitional zone between single-family to something else. And in this case, you know, half of our abutters or more are Treska Sanaburts, you know, so there's not a lot, you know, to the south of this development, there's a couple of homes out in the woods on Dwight and Larch, but there's not much else there. And to east of us, again, is Treska, plus that one house in front, which I'm pretty sure they own as well.
Other questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the utilities, if I could briefly.
Yes, Mr. McKay.
So it was stated when this first came to us, I mean, 48 units. Right now, we do not have the capacity at the Charles River District. Those numbers just don't jive at all. Other than that, you know, if, if, if approved and, and the board chose to allow the sewer system in there, the lift station that would have to service it is undersized, that would have to be rebuilt, and I'm sure at the owner's cost. We're looking at another 48-unit system, you know, development on the same sewer line. Not sure what, you know, the impacts of that would be. We don't forget, on Bridge Street, we have the 100-unit assisted living project that's, you know, as people don't understand that, is still under design and, and it's going to be built. And as the permitting, when we did the permitting through the planning board and through this board, the, we, we told them they had to install a holding tank, so they could only pump out after hours because the system at the station at Dover Road isn't large enough for it to build, to take the sewer on a daily flow. The water main, this, there's a, this is a hard, dead-end area. There is, the developer looped Bridge Street, which is across the street from it. He did loop that from a six to an eight. I'm sure that the developer would like to tie into that eight-inch main. They'd have to do a lot of testing to see if that would be an acceptable pressure for that, for that, this large development, 48 units. When the developer came in, and when he talked to the town administrator, myself, Mr. Weiss, and a couple of other people, it was definitely stated that, you know, the town would look at some sort of package treatment plant for this facility, and that the water main extension to loop it down from Dover Road would be a viable option for him to do. That was what was proposed to him when he first came into the town. So those are some of the issues. I mean, the sidewalk is across the street. It's not on the side of, of this development. I know, I think it's drawn that there's a sidewalk, and put a sidewalk in there, but you'd have to put a crosswalk going across Route 109 to get it on the opposite side of the street to walk up to the downtown. But I think if approved, I mean, there's a lot of discussion would have to be made of sewer and water. I mean, it's not as just, oh, it's there, and we have plenty, you know, we don't have the capacity for sewer, and I would even not think that the water pressure would be acceptable without some sort of remediation on Route 109.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few thoughts.
Go ahead.
On the water topic, certainly, we do, we could, could and would do parklot testing to see what's there and what that situation might be. On the question of sewer, I think you're, most of you are aware that I've been involved in the sewer discussions and have a good handle on the situation. As affordable housing developments, the state, the state views the need for affordable housing as a very high priority. And the reality is that the town of Millicent is only using 65% or 70% of your allocated sewer capacity. And I realize that, you know, on paper, it may seem that you have a capacity problem, but I think as I, as, as I told the board my view, and your consultant supported that view, and so did Charles River Blue Control in those meetings that were had, that, you know, the numbers that are being set aside for those possible future connections are vastly overstated. It was interesting in listening this evening to your rate meeting, your water consultant there, your rate consultant cited that, you know, your water consumption is typically 65 gallons per day per person, which is absolutely correct. And not a drop of water goes into a sewer that doesn't come up, come through your water meter. So, you know, do the math. I'm looking at your census right now. There's an average of 2.7 people per household in the town of Millicent. 2.7 times 65 is under 200 gallons per day, and we're holding on these sewer applications, 440 gallons per day per house, which just supports the fact that the paper kind of concern, which is a legitimate concern, is overstated. And I think that if you talk to people who are familiar with the flooding process and comprehensive permits, you know, the state really expects communities to provide sewer capacity where it is available, where Millicent is, is not using its allocated sewer capacity. I think the state would conclude that it is available for a development of this nature.
And Mr. Chairman, may I, may I add also to that, as, as Dan mentioned, you know, there is case history at the Housing Appeals Committee specifically relating to water and sewer, which I was involved with. It's called Hilltop Preserve versus the town of Walpole. Similar situation, larger number of units, however. The Housing Appeals Committee made it quite clear regarding water and sewer. You know, obviously, the reason why we're choosing a lift process is because we think we want to, obviously, want to work cooperatively with the town, and this is only the first step. I mean, there's, we still need to obviously prepare an application for the state under the lift program, get approval from them for site eligibility, and then be able to submit to the zoning board appeals, where we will have the technical review done, and also the peer reviews done regarding some of the questions and concerns Mr. McKay raised. So while we're asking you for the support, you're not giving us the approval to start construction in the next six months. You're really just giving us support that you are, understand the need for affordable housing, that there is a site, while not, might not be the perfect site, that is a site that could support a that is a site that could support affordable housing based on all the technical reviews that need to be done and such. And hopefully, we can address a lot of Mr. McKay's comments and concerns he's raised during that process.
And by the time the development would actually start to be constructed, I think a good chunk of your conceptual sewer usage that's on paper but not in reality right now would be installed. Toll Brothers is moving right along and there are several other developments in town that are moving right along. And a year from now, we're going to have a much better handle on what your sewer situation is in reality compared to the, the kind of very theoretical exercise that you're stuck with right now because you have so many projects on the books. Just to give you a flavor for it, you know, 48 units sounds like a lot, but it's, it's 84 bedrooms. So that is, that is an average day flow of 4,620 gallons per day and a max day flow of 9,240 gallons per day for sewer.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jermaine.
From my perspective, this is a good introduction. It gives us an overview of what they're looking for. I think we have a lot of different steps to go through, a lot more information that we need, none of which are going to be resolved this evening. From also my perspective, I happen to think that the idea of the lift project makes some sense for this town. Whether we can meet all the objectives and concerns that have been raised, and I raised early on the concern regarding sewer, but Dan knows from the past my feelings on that. So I think any of that can be overcome. It's just going to have to be dealt with over time. I would submit that we say, yeah, okay, we're interested, but that's about as far as I'd go at this point. And let's see how it progresses from this point forward as we get more information.
Okay, Ms. Underhill, you have some thoughts at this point as to what you'd like to do tonight?
I'm comfortable with what Pete suggested. I think everyone had a lot of good thoughts and I understand the sewer concerns. And if we have other projects, it looks like we have a lot to keep in mind that isn't physically there yet, that's going to be tapping into that as well, but as planned. So, I mean, obviously, that's a concern. The location and a crosswalk on 109 sounds a little bit terrifying. But understanding the 40B commitment and the opportunity that this poses, I mean, that piece does sound positive, especially since most of the abutting area appears to be Tresca.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, following up on that, I guess we'd like to know what additional information you'd like for us or what steps you'd like us to take between now and, you know, the next time we can meet with you.
Well, from my perspective, I think what we would like is, I agree with my colleagues. I'm not willing to go forward tonight. My conversation has been very helpful. I think this is an intriguing development proposal that you, plus, we do have obviously some feedback from our economic development planner and from DPW about capacity and other thoughts. I would like to get some input on traffic flow because I, I'd like to understand specifically what the proposal is. You mentioned, you know, one way in and one way out. I'd like to know whether that's really what's going to happen and whether or not because of the number of cars or whatnot, someone might be looking from a traffic control point of view to additional, you know, traffic lights, et cetera. Also with respect to crossing the street, because I do think, I agree with my colleague, it's a little bit harrowing to thought, if you're going to walk into town, you got to go across 109. So I would like us to have some more conversation around that. Looking to delay this for months. I'm willing to have it come back onto the agenda at our next meeting. And I asked Mr. Weiss in particular to bring forward a comprehensive list of the other projects underway or being considered. I'm not here to criticize the zoning board of appeal. They've been working very hard and trying to, trying to hold hearings in a very difficult time. Very hard to do with Zoom to get the right kind of input. So what I would like to do is ask you to give us some time to think about it, other questions we could pose to you to come back either our next meeting or the one after that, because I do want to move forward with this, one way or the other. I don't want this to linger. And frankly, you know, maybe I was missed. I mean, I got a little bit of some misunderstanding as to what you wanted us to do tonight because it was listed on the agenda as sort of the opening conversation rather than a decision-making conversation. But I'm more than happy to move this thing through the system reasonably rapidly. And whether it takes another couple of weeks, I think that would be helpful to us to sort of try to absorb what we heard tonight, get some additional information. If we have questions for you, we will pose them as soon as we can because I want to get the information back to the board members as quickly as possible. And I would, it is 10:08 PM and we have other things we have to do tonight as well. So if you would grant us the courtesy of, let's continue this conversation and see if we can have additional discussion at our next meeting, which is the 31st of August.
That would be great, Mr. Chairman. And if you would like us to meet with, you know, Mr. McKay, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Kozinski, any, you know, town staff so that we can answer questions and provide more information, we're absolutely happy to do that.
Well, we would appreciate that and we'll probably take you up on that offer as well. All right, thank you, and we appreciate this proposal. It is an interesting and intriguing opportunity for the town. We want to make sure that we think it through. But I think we, give us a little bit more time to digest it.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good evening. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Which I've been all lost. What's next? Karen.
Compliance of. Compliance of 617 Therapeutic for a marijuana cultivator license.
Yes, Mr. Kozinski, could you just brief the board as to what the next procedural step here is in the 617 licensing process?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes. As part of the Cannabis Control Commission's approval process for all marijuana businesses in the Commonwealth, the state requests that the local executive board certify that the applicant's business as proposed is in compliance with all relevant municipal bylaws and ordinances. You have documentation in your packet from the state that kind of outlines that process. And when reviewing that, the application from 617 Therapeutic is in compliance with the bylaws of Milis. This is a similar process we went through for the other marijuana businesses, or namely, Comcan in the community, went through a similar certification process. This is basically a procedural step. Basically, the board has 60 days in order to answer this. It's considered satisfied if the board takes no action in 60 days. But in order for 617 Therapeutic to move forward, they need this certification. So if the board were to act to certify that this evening, they'd be able to move forward with the next step. There is a delay within the CCC's schedule as there, as there has been since its formation. There is just a backlog of cases for them to go through and address. So earlier that the board can approve this, the quicker that they can move forward with their processes at the state level. They can get in the queue for the state-level approval for them to take the next step. So I do recommend that the board approve signing the certification for 617 Therapeutic this evening.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Yes, Karen.
I just wanted to note that I spoke with Peter Degasino today of 617 Therapeutic, who said that once this has been signed and approved by the board, there is about a 60- to 70-day turnaround by the CCC at this time. Once they get that back, that the next step for them would be to start looking to get building permits, et cetera, from the town and then moving forward in that process. So this is by no means the final step here for them.
All right, thank you. You know, from my perspective, we've worked closely with this applicant. We've worked for many years now, as it turns out, all the way back to the actual development of zoning requirements. I believe that we should support, indicate that they are in compliance and support the next step for them because I believe that they have moved up to their obligations to the town and it's our turn to do the same. So I'm all in favor of signing this document and sending it back to the CCC.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jermaine.
I guess as long as our town administrator feels comfortable that he has reviewed this, because I've gone through it and I wouldn't know if I was looking at it correctly or not, to be very frank with you. But if I can rely on him to say he's reviewed it, looks good, it's in compliance, then like you, I have no concern about saying, yes, let's go to the next step and let's sign it.
And I do confirm that, Mr. Chairman, that the documents, as I've reviewed them, appear to be in order and they have met all the requirements to move forward in their application process with the state.
Okay, well, then I would make a motion that the board, what do they want us to do? They want us to accept to certify that they're in compliance with local requirements as the next step?
That's correct. And then they, they need an official from the town that's been authorized by the chief executive board to sign off on the documents and file them with the Cannabis Control Commission.
Well, I would amend the motion to direct the town administrator to execute those documents on behalf of the town.
I'll second that.
We moved and seconded discussion. No discussion, I'll call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Next item is the gymnasium floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's some information in your packet in regards to the gymnasium floor in the Veterans Memorial Building. As the board knows, we recently experienced some water damage in the gymnasium. Our insurer has concluded, as you know, the floor needs to be replaced and our insurer thankfully will be paying for that replacement. However, in the process of that, there's been some discussion as to the best type of flooring to put down in the gymnasium. The flooring that had been there is the traditional maple hardwood flooring. There is another product that has had some success in other gymnasiums referred to as the Robbins Plastic Combi System, which is, it's a synthetic material that is reportedly is more scratch-resistant, water-resistant, and generally holds up better over time than the traditional hardwood flooring. And based on the information we've received from the company that would be installing the flooring, whether it be the maple flooring or the plastic combi system, the synthetic flooring is approximately $4,200 more in cost. You know, we've spoken with several of the folks involved with utilizing the floor, that there is definitely an interest in this. I know Karen has been heavily involved in speaking with a lot of people in regards to it. So I don't know if Karen has any thoughts in regards to the different type of flooring and the pros and cons that she's talked to the different folks here about.
Mr. Chair?
Would you like to, Chair, yes, go ahead.
So I have spoken to several different people. I spoke to the rec rector. I spoke to the Council on Aging Director. I spoke to John Engler at the school today with the thoughts. The general consensus has been to go with the synthetic floor. From what we hear, it tends to be better on joints and that type of thing. If you remember that the gym here is not the correct size to use for standard basketball. It's a little bit small, so it's used primarily for rec basketball, volleyball, lots of different kids' activities, lots of activities for the Council on Aging. So I think in that way, the synthetic floor would be the way to go. I think it's also more water-resistant. It's still not completely waterproof if we had something huge happen, but general spills and that type of thing would be better. The only other thing I can say is that when I spoke with John Engler today, he said the schools in general are tending to go more, are heading to go back to the hardwood floors, only because they find that they're a little bit slippery. And there can be some smell to the synthetic floor, I guess, that they don't like in the schools. Some odor that is given off at times. So I don't know. It's kind of a 50-50. There's definitely a little bit less, a little bit of less maintenance with the synthetic. And I, to me, if it's better on joints and things for the people that are actually using it here, that makes more sense to me. So there you are. There's no, there's no clear definitive answer, unfortunately.
Well, I guess from my point of view, what I want is a recommendation.
Yeah.
To me. But, Mr. Jermaine, Ms. Underhill, you have questions?
I do have a question. I am concerned, if you say, Mr. Engler's saying it gives off an odor and we're going to have elderly folks and others playing on it, that's a concern. I mean, up to that point, I was very interested in the synthetic floor, but I certainly wouldn't want to put something in that inhibits certain individuals from playing because of the smell or something that could affect them in that way. So now suddenly I'm at a loss. I mean, we know what a maple floor will do. Unfortunately, it doesn't hold up to standing water for a significant period of time. Hopefully, we don't have that again. But short of that, although I'd normally like the synthetic, I am concerned when I hear that from Mr. Engler.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do, up until today, I was certainly prepared to recommend the synthetic flooring. But based on the comments from Mr. Engler, I probably would want to take a little more time to do just a little bit more research for your next meeting to make a, make a recommendation to the board. So, but if there's any current questions at this point from the board in regards to the situation or where we're at, I'd certainly like to hear those. Otherwise, at this point, I believe I'd recommend that we put this on your next agenda for a, for a final decision at that time.
Are we going to be able to vote?
Yes.
On September 1st and November 3rd?
Mr. Chair, I can actually speak to that, yeah, if you want. That is, we've had a lot of conversations about that. Either way, there's going to be a long lead time for the floor to come in. The floor is halfway torn out at this point, the existing floor. They had to tear it up due to the water underneath. They got into the pad and they had concerns about mold. So that's all cordoned off or sealed off at this point and they're removing the floor. They are going to put something down, probably just plywood, but make it accessible for people to come and vote. It's all through insurance. They will be very careful that it is put down correctly and that we're not looking at any accidents or any issues for that. So we will have that ready for, at that point, our hope is to then actually replace the floor in September after the election, but before the election in November.
Yes, if I can, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate, no matter what the decision is on the, on the actual replacement of the flooring, the, I fully agree with what Karen just said, that the gymnasium will be fully prepared for the primary election on September 1st.
Yes.
So this delay will have to. So this delay will not affect the ability of the, the townsfolk to vote?
Not at all, not at all.
No, that was, that was one of our big concerns, and insurance has been working with us for that, knowing that we have some time constraints for that.
Well, I would be inclined to agree, Mr. Jermaine, that if we don't have a firm proposal or a firm recommendation, let's, let's do it next time.
Yeah. That's fine with me, and I apologize for the late information. I was on vacation next week, and I just got some additional information today that actually surprised me. Again, I was ready to recommend the synthetic floor, but now I feel like I, we need to do some more due diligence here.
Okay. So we'll decide that next time. Last item for, I hope, is the water sewer commitment.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the sewer commitment for the month of July, and I would ask the board to approve the commitment for July in the amount of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and ninety cents. I move that we approve the sewer commitment for July two thousand twenty, this will be year twenty-one, in the amount of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
I move and seconded to approve the water sewer commitment for July two thousand twenty in the amount of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and ninety cents. I'll call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So at this point, I will, we're going to move the board into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, including sixty-one A parcel five C on Ridge Street and sixty-one A parcel three-twenty-six Orchard Street, and also to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the case of Covielo and the streetlights. I will call the board to go into executive session. When we are completed with the executive session, we will emerge to adjourn the open session. So I will call the board to go into executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill, yes? So we go into executive session. I want the board to go to a different Zoom site.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, if we could take, I know it's late, but if you could take like a three-minute break in between so people can stretch their legs and I can get town council on, notify town council that we're going into executive session.
We'll have a five-second break, five-minute break.
Five-minute, outstanding.
Five-second.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Thank you.
We do have a separate Zoom number for this because it's not open.
That's correct.
You should have an email.